Good evening, folks. Welcome to the October Town Council meeting. My name is Steve Colander. I am the Vice President of the Council. And our Council President, John Hanley, is out of town. So I will be chairing the meeting this evening. Our first order of business is the Presidential Allegiance, please.
By allegiance, the United States of America and through the Republic of America, we are one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can ask everyone to still remain standing so we can have a moment for silence for Scott Matheson. Thank you, please be seated. So again, good evening and welcome. The first order of business on our agenda is public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, we welcome you to come up at this time. All I do is ask and remind that whatever your comments are, please direct them towards the council. And we will not be able to respond at this time if it's not on the agenda. So is there anybody that would like to come? We have somebody coming forward. Good evening, Mr. Bosa.
Good evening. Just one little thing that I know there's been photos posted recently of the new broken bridge getting repaired and will be finally finished soon. And I started to think about somebody that Warren lost recently, who was the champion of the Kickin' Muat River. And I just thought it might be a nice idea maybe to name that bridge after Ann Morrow as Chair, Champion of the Kickin' Muat River.
Well, Davidson, we will definitely take that under advisement and thank you for your for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak? Seeing none, I am going to close this portion of the public comic meeting and move on to the agenda. So next on the agenda, we have some recognitions and we have a lot of folks in the building this evening for these recognitions. So at this time, if I could please have Elizabeth Johnson come forward so she can be recognized by the Warren Town Council. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Warren Town Council, for your outstanding years of service. Thirty-two and a half, thirty-two and a half. On behalf of the entire Warren Town Council.
At the time, he was responsible at the rookie high school. She thinks today for Congress that she's looking forward to making changes as interim chief, including promoting a community public model. This place is still running like nineteen sixty-eight when my father was hired.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm gonna pretty much call up the entire Warren Police Department because we have some recognition certificates and notoriety that we want to embellish on them. So please, the chief has asked me to do the presentation?
Yeah.
Yeah. And Daniel, I promise I won't call you by the wrong name.
Come ready.
I've never felt safer. But this is the security people. Yeah. Yeah. First, we'd like to recognize that Patrolman Daniel McLaughlin has been promoted to Detective Daniel McLaughlin. So if you'll allow me, whereas he has served the Warren Police Department for fourteen years, working his way up the ranks, he has performed such service faithfully under the most trying conditions in countless ways. And whereas he graduated from Oryx Veterans Memorial High School and entered an associate's degree in law enforcement from Community College of Rhode Island in two thousand and six. And whereas he enhanced his skills with the Bureau of Criminal Identification and Investigation Training at the University of Rhode Island in two thousand and twenty-three, congratulations. And whereas his dedication and experience led to his promotion to the rank of detective in June of two thousand and twenty-four. Now, therefore, we, the Warren Town Council, urge all citizens to join with us in the expression of our appreciation to Detective Daniel McLaughlin, who will be assigned to the rank of detective presented this eighth day of October, two thousand and twenty-four. Making a baby cry. I just. I can be the baby whisperer. So if you folks will allow me and bear with me, I'm gonna give you some details of an incident that happened in the town of Warren, which can happen anywhere in any part of the country and any part of the world. On June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, at zero five hours, that's five minutes past midnight, Dispatcher O'Donnell received phone calls reporting a male acting aggressively in the parking lot of seven hundred Medicum Avenue. One of the callers added that the same male had something in his hand and was waving a gun around. While yelling and screaming, Dispatcher O'Donnell relayed this information to the responding officers and kept the caller on the line, continuing to gather information about the suspect and his actions. Upon arrival of on the scene, Sergeant Morissette, Patrolman Waltz, Patrolman Fabiano, and Patrolman Foley were in the area. They met with one of the callers, who identified as the suspect's girlfriend. After conducting a preliminary search of the parking lot for the suspect, the officers then tactically approached the first floor apartment in order to make contact with the suspect through a glass sliding door. The suspect had returned to his apartment prior to the officer's arrival at the scene. As Sergeant Morissette attempted to slide the door open to order to speak with the suspect, the other officers presided cover. As the door was opened, officers immediately observed that the suspect was holding a firearm pointed in their direction. The officers then tactically withdrew to a better cover, at which, I like that. No, I'm all good with that. At which they withdrew to a better cover, at which point Sergeant Morissette began a dialogue with the suspect, instructing him to show his hands. The suspect was extremely irate, apparently intoxicated, and continued to yell at the officers. Although the suspect initially refused to exit his apartment, it was only through the officer's de-escalation techniques and calmness that they were eventually able to persuade the suspect to exit the apartment without the firearm and allowing himself to be taken into custody. The officers showed great demonstrated great restraint and effectively used their training, which allowed the situation to be brought under control. As we all know, this type of call has the potential to severely jeopardize officers' safety and the safety of the public. Their actions are not only commendable, but also reflect their professionalism, tenacity, and situational naivety. What I have before them is Certificate of Recognition for Sergeant Joel Morissette, Patrolman Joshua Waltz, Patrolman John Fabiano, Patrolman Sean Foley. You are hereby commended for their rapid, safe, and professional response, as well as the devotion to your duty. Sergeant Morissette, front and sever, please. Is Joel not here?
He's actually probably on the beat.
Yeah.
He's the one, the one out there.
Patrolman Joshua Waltz, please. Patrolman John Fabiano. No? Patrolman Sean Foley. And now, but last least, our dispatcher Laura O'Donnell. Not to go unrecognized because Dispatcher Laura O'Donnell is hereby recognized for her professional conduct and immediate action in coordinating public safety communications than the course of her duties. Let me tell you something, folks. Speaking from experience, without communications that are clear, concise, and getting you all the information, none of this happens. This was a great team effort and you guys should all be recognized for your professionalism. Thank you very much. Don't go away. Jeez, Joel, I didn't know if this would ever happen. Yeah. Detective Joel Camara has officially announced his retirement. The town of Warren would like to extend our heartfelt congratulations to Detective Joel Camara on his retirement after thirty-five years of dedicated service to the town of Warren and its citizens. Detective Camara began his career with the Warren Police Department as a dispatcher in September of nineteen eighty-nine, before attending the Rhode Island Police Academy in nineteen ninety-four and becoming a full-time swamp police officer. He was promoted to the rank of detective in nineteen ninety-nine, where he excelled in his passion for investigation. Many in the town know Detective Camara, whether from interactions, from his outside work of doing his follow-ups, or the numerous investigations he conducted, and he resolved. Please let's join us, excuse me, please join us in celebrating Detective Joel Camara's thirty-five years of dedicated service to the town of Warren. We wish him the best in his future endeavors. Don't go away. This commemorative plaque is presented by the town of Warren to Detective Camara for his dedicated years of service. On a side note, Joel and I actually went to the FBI Firearms Academy for a firearms instructor. He is one heck of a shot, just letting you know, okay? Again, congratulations and thank you. Would you like to say a few words, Keith? I think it would be appropriate.
I'm gonna say thank you for coming. I'm very proud of my officers. As you can see, they're an amazing group of young men and women. And July, June twenty-third was a perfect indicator to show how well we handle ourselves. Detective Camara has been a big part of our department. We wish him the best. And as I mentioned, our dispatchers, not only Laura, but the other ones, did an amazing job. Thank you.
All right, so moving on, folks, we do have one more recognition. Unfortunately, Melissa from East Bay Printing is not here. They have fifty years of service and they're celebrating their anniversary in November, I believe, on the thirteenth with an open house. So just so we know, is hereby awarded the Certificate of Recognition with the congratulations of the Warren Town Council for their highly successful innovative business, which consistently consistently practices exemplary corporate citizenship. Presented on this eighth day of October, two thousand and twenty-four. So great job to East Bay Printing. So moving right along, we're gonna call up our state representatives, Representative Speakman and Representative Jason Knight. If we could have Tara Thibodeau, Elizabeth O'Connell, and Elwood Donnelly, please come forward to receive your recognition. Yes, and Wally, I apologize. Yes, Mike, my set and Carrie Cronin, thank you. Yes, and we went over this.
So as you may know, the Rhode Island General Assembly has a legislative grant program in which members of the House and the Senate sponsor grants on behalf of community groups and government agencies. And it is our pleasure to present four of them this evening. We have a grant for ten thousand dollars for the Warren Parks and Recreation Department for furniture for the beach house, for the new building. Congratulations, Tara. We have a grant for the Blue Pot People, the Warren Volunteer Gardeners, of which I am proud to be one, for fourteen hundred dollars to continue their efforts to keep downtown beautiful. Thank you, Elizabeth. And we have a grant for eighteen hundred and fifty dollars for the Warren Holiday Festival for Elwood, for the Warren Holiday Festival. I'm not sure. We also have a grant that was delivered some time ago for Discover Warren for all of it that it does to promote small businesses in Warren. Thank you, Carrie, and your team for that.
I would just like to add that the Senate and the House have different processes and different timetables in terms of when they are providing their legislative grants. But if you total up the grants between Representative Knight and Representative Speak and myself, we've awarded over twenty grants this year to various organizations and government entities within the town of Warren, whether it be the library, the senior center, substance abuse, fire department, police department, various odd organizations. And I mentioned the senior center, Little League, and so we have a lot of different organizations. We contributed throughout the whole year. So congratulations to all these organizations.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're gonna move on to another presentation, but this time we have our engineers in the house, Fussin' O'Neill on the Market Street tide gates. Please come forward, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. President, Councilor members. My name is Sean Martin. I'm a principal at Fussin' O'Neill and a professional engineer. I understand we've been asked to attend the meeting tonight to talk about this project and maybe a little bit of the history. So I'm not sure exactly what the interests of the council are. So I entertained some questions and I can, I brought some maps of the area to show to show the council. And I have some other documents that you might be interested in seeing.
So if the members don't mind, I'll just start this off. I have really two questions. I'm gonna let the fire truck go by though for a second. It's like a parade. So when you guys were doing your your overlay study, were you looking at the entire community for water mitigation or just that particular area?
Just this particular area. This was, um, this particular area of Market Street near J and J Cleaners and the remote parking lot for Crossroads Pub was identified as a nuisance flooding area, Beltray Town, Beltray Cove during tidal surges, king tides and things of that nature. Water would back into the drainage system that goes under Market Street to the east side of the road and cause some flooding issues. And actually, in the application that the town submitted to DM to help fund this project, they submitted some pictures showing Market Street being flooded during a king tide. So we looked at that area and we evaluated some potential options that would mitigate some of the flooding, not all of flooding. And certainly, the solution that's being proposed is not a long-term solution. I think many council members are familiar with the Market Street planning study that we did, which is was much later.
Yes.
And more comprehensive in scope.
So and then I just have another follow-up. So the tide gates, and am I, is that the correct term?
Yes.
Okay. That you were discussing, if those are in the closed position, where is that water going to end up?
So water in the in the river from the the east side of the road flows through the culvert and would go through this valve.
Okay.
And then there's only a pressure differential of a few inches between the high side and the low side that is required to open up the valve. It's made of a rubber, resilient rubber material. It looks like a duck spill in a vertical position. So a little bit of pressure differential is enough to open it and let water flow freely. So during tides, where the tide is actually higher than the water upstream, it prevents that water from surging back upstream and preventing more nuisance flooding. And the reality in this situation is Beltray Cove and the ocean have a much more significant potential flooding impact than the watershed's runoff and contributions. Now, again, there will be some period of time where large storms will still overtop Market Street. That's just a fact. And this is not going to be a long-term solution. The the system can be removed. It can be adapted to a new solution such as rose rating raising or things like that. But, um, yeah, this is, that's in summary.
And just so we're clear, and please don't be afraid to explain it to me like I'm in the fourth grade. And if you have to go down two grades, I'm fine with that too. Those tide gates are implemented. They're not gonna push the water into another area and flood.
Okay, absolutely not.
All right, that's right, so. Yeah.
I think that's the.
It's the big question.
That was the big question.
Yes, folks are starting to reach out to me. Yeah.
Where's that water gonna go? It's gonna impact other areas. So you're negating the effect of one area, but it pushes it to another area. So that was, I think that was the big concern.
Yeah, it's all the same watershed. It's just a way to to prevent that that cove tide water from coming back upstream. And at and at certain points, as you know, the the stream is either during a heavy storm event, the stream will flow at a much greater rate. However, if the the cove is one or two feet higher than the river, it's gonna back into the river anyway.
And that cove being one or two feet high could be caused by high tide, moon tide?
King tide, yeah, the king tides, yeah, or high tides. And sea level changes and it's increasing, it it will just exacerbate over time. That's why I say this is not a long-term solution. It's not the ultimate solution.
And and I apologize, I said I only had two questions. I really do have three. I thought of another one. Did you do any physical inspections on any of the culverts?
Yes.
You did?
Yes.
And what condition did you find them to be in?
Uh, the they were in fair condition. There is some work that needs to be done on the head wall, which is a concrete retaining wall on the downstream end and some riprap, which is stone reinforcing reinforcing material for the slopes. A lot of that stuff is gonna need to be repaired. That's DOT's problem.
And will this be all spelled out in a formal, excuse me, report that you'll bring back to us? Or is this tonight?
That's not part of the scope of work that would greatly increase the cost of the project. And a lot of the work that DOT is already planning on repaving that road and doing some other improvements, it's totally separate from this project. The town does have a physical alteration permit issued by DOT that's good for another two years. There's a CRMC ascent for the project that's good for another couple of years. And this grant is good until January, two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay. Any other questions, by all means?
So it's not a long-term solution.
Correct.
Said that a number of times. Any projections on what this what this would gain us? Any projections on what this would gain us right now for how long?
Maybe ten years.
Okay, sort of, and I know that's very difficult to say.
Right.
I get that.
Yeah, and as with all climate-related solutions, we have to look at kind of incremental solutions, and some of them are temporary just by the significant costs that's associated with these longer-term, more...
Cost benefit.
Yes.
Motion to approve. Thank you for coming this evening.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there a second?
We didn't take action.
Yeah, we're not really, I mean, yeah.
Approving the project. Motion approved.
Thank you. Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Sean. We'll be in touch. All right, next on the agenda is the appointment and discussion of potential action of zoning board. Building official Matt Cabral is the town's FEMA, Community Rating Systems CRS Coordinator. Mr. Cabral, please come forward. So I had the privilege of you explaining this at the department head meeting, so it'd be appropriate for you to give that same explanation of why we're having this before us this evening.
Good evening. So every town has a coordinator that's in charge of overseeing all FEMA issues when it comes to flood mitigation and insurance. I guess I've been selected.
Drew the straw, essentially?
Yes. I'm also many hats that I wear, I'm the floodplain manager, so this kind of goes hand-in-hand with that position.
You feel like this is a good fit for you?
Yeah.
You don't really have a choice.
Is there anyone else?
Motion approved. You're it. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations. Moving on, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, three positions available, we have five members. Is Kristin Nancy Reed in the... I see her coming forward. No need to rush. We're good. Yeah. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you.
Please tell us a little about yourself.
Sure. So I'm a resident of Warren, and I am somebody who was originally on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, been involved in some other projects here in town, and believe that I can bring some connections and network to this type of work, because currently I am the director of something called the Warren Health Equity Zone, which is an initiative of the Rhode Island Department of Health and a project of East Bay Community Action Program. So supporting clients who are in need of affordable and moderately priced housing and understand just that if you are housing insecure, you are everything insecure. So want to be part of this work and make a difference.
Good. Motion approved. Is there a second?
A second, obviously, and thank you for just diving into yet another opportunity to serve the community. It really is highly appreciated.
Perfect fit, too. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kristin.
All right.
Yes.
You want to vote?
We did. Yeah, we voted. We approved it. Yep, next on is we have Janine Castleman. Oh, good evening. Front row.
Good evening.
Welcome. Please, tell us a little about yourself.
So my name is Janine Castleman. I have been a resident of Warren for eighteen years. In my professional life, I am a public interest attorney and have spent most of my career thinking about the intersection of housing, quality of housing, and how it impacts health. So I was very interested in hearing what Warren is doing around this, and when this opportunity arose, I submitted my application. Would you like to know more? If you want an attorney to talk a long time, I'm happy.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Janine Castleman to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations. And we have one more applicant. We have John Sheridan. Is Mr. Sheridan, he is? Good evening, John, and welcome. Please, by all means, tell us a little about it.
My name's John Sheridan. I live at 34 Brownell. I'm a licensed architect and a registered contractor in Rhode Island, and I run my own design-build firm for the last twenty-eight years. My prior experience has been as an architect in traditional architecture firms. I worked for a commercial general contractor. I spent five years working for, as a project developer for two community development corporations in DC, in one in North Capital Area and one in Anacostia, before starting my own business. I previously served on the Warren Volunteer Historic Board, and I read the Housing Task Forces mission, and I wanted very much to participate and be a part of it.
I would like to make a motion to appoint John Sheridan, and I'd like to say that this has turned into a rather powerhouse of a board given tonight's additional and previously existing members, so thank you all so much.
I'll second your motion, and I agree. I don't think we've ever had three applicants like this in one meeting, so thank you.
Wow.
That's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations. So we still have some committees and boards that we're still looking for, folks, if there's anyone interested. We have the Budget Committee, the Economic Development, Juvenile Hearing Board, the Rhode Island 250th Commission, the Tree Ward, and there's one position available, the Warren Arts and Culture. So if anyone has an interest, by all means, please come forward. We'd love to have you join on our team. Next on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting of September ninth, 2024. Did anyone come up with any adjustments?
I didn't see any. Motion approved.
Is there a second? All opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
And the executive session meetings from September ninth, 2024, which I believe we're still waiting for, our solicitor is not in at this point in time. Yes, can I have a motion to continue?
Motion to continue. Next month.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The consent agenda, we have P1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Did anyone see anything from the consent agenda that they would like to poll?
No. Motion to put forward the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Ordinance 01, Chapter 15, Planning, Article 4, Comprehensive Plan, Section 15-7, Leader Comprehensive Plan Incorporated by Reference, this is the second reading. Comprehensive Plan of the Town of Warren, as duly updated and adopted from time to time, is hereby incorporated by reference in its entirety. This section shall take effect for the purpose of conforming municipal land use decisions and for the purpose of being transmitted to the Rhode Island Director of Administration for state review upon public hearing and passage. This section shall not become effective for the purposes of guiding state agency actions until it is approved by the State of Rhode Island pursuant to Chapter 45-22.2 of the General Laws of Rhode Island, aka of the Rhode Island Comprehensive Planning and Land Use Act.
I make a motion to approve this Chapter 15 Planning, or 01. And so you all know, this is not the adoption of the comprehensive plan.
No, this is...
Housekeeping.
Housekeeping, yes.
This is just a technicality, so I make a motion to move it forward.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. 02, Chapter 6.5, Courts, Article 2, Municipal Court, Section 6.5-24, Municipal Court Clerk, this is also the second reading. The office of the town clerk shall provide administrative staffing as needed for the proper operation of the municipal court, to include but not be limited to providing trained staff while the municipal court is in session, and to performing duties and requirements necessary to the conduct of the day-to-day responsibilities as determined by the municipal court judge and/or the town clerk. The clerk of the court shall keep a regular docket of all cases, including cases disposed of, shall record the judgments, orders, and sentences of the court, collect fees, penalties, fines, and costs, and shall furnish certified copies thereof when required or requested for which copies. The clerk shall charge the same fees as are allowed by law to the clerks of the Superior Court. He or she shall keep his or her office open to the public during such hours as the court shall determine. Section C, the clerk of the court shall be responsible for the administrative duties required of the municipal court in accordance with the state and municipal court compact, and shall be responsible for all documentation and record-keeping required of the Rhode Island Traffic Tribunal. Again, this is just some formal housekeeping that we need to do as this is the second reading.
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. 03, Chapter 15, Planning, Article 2, Board, Section 15-26-15.32, the first reading. Give me a minute as I get to it. Yes, we have copies. We have copies in the... At the table, if anyone of the public wants to read it. It is quite a lengthy document. The solicitor... Ben, is this necessary to get the whole thing into the...
Yes.
So how do you recommend?
Just the red parts, right?
Just the red parts.
Yes.
Okay. All right, here we go. Section 15-26, Alternate Members, we're going to two when it comes to the created composition appointments, terms of members and the vacancies. Section 15-27, Compensation of Members, the council's adopted annual town budget is the added language. Section 15-28, Election of the Chair and/or Vice Chair. It'll be the vice chair from its own members, so the chairman and the vice chair will be from its own members. Section 15-29, Where Meetings Are Held. I'm assuming this is the notification question, it says the town clerk's office, but meetings aren't held in the town clerk's office.
Yeah, that was confusing to me as well.
Which shall be provided by the clerk's office. The accommodation for which shall be provided. So it's the action of finding a place that'll be done in the clerk's office.
So the town clerk will be the logistics scheduling officer?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, feel good with your haircut. 15, Section 15-30, A Quorum, except for development applications whereby the concurring vote of a simple majority of those members present and voting at a meeting where a quorum is established. So they have a quorum, they're able to vote. Section 15-31, Records, the town staff may be assigned to administratively provide assistance to help the planning board carry out its statutory responsibilities required of the open meeting law as part of its quasi-judicial review of developmental, of development applications.
Should there be a comma after law in open meeting law? Maybe? I don't know. I'm the comma police.
I don't have a problem with that. Can you make that note? Yeah, I think that's grammatically correct.
Just needs a little pause there.
Right after open meeting law in Section 15-31, open meeting law, comma, and, Carrie is 100% correct, the comma is appropriate there.
Jeez.
Well, I'm a grammar guy. All right, all the way...
Grandma.
Grandma.
Grandmother.
Yeah. All the way into Section 15-31.1, Professional Review Fees, if you move all the way to page four, Section F. With the exception of the town solicitor, regarding the town solicitor specifically pertaining to development application review at all, the town, in this case, the planning board, cannot change the town council appointment. The privilege of such an appointment resides solely with the town council. If it becomes any matter that would preclude the town solicitor from carrying out their regular duties, e.g. a conflict of interest concerning matters of the planning board's duties, it would be the responsibility of the town solicitor to identify such an issue and recommend a resolution amendable to the town council.
Can I just ask another sort of procedural or consistency question? If we're capitalizing town solicitor, should we be capitalizing town council wherever it appears in this document? Okay, it is not. So that can just be...
Did you get that? So town council, yes. And furthermore, in this section, under Section 7, subsection B, the town manager or his/her designate has been added.
Let's make it there, please. T-H-E-I-R.
So what do we want to take out, Carrie?
Just the his/her.
Want to make there?
Replace it with there, T-H-E-I-R.
Yep, T-H-E-I-R. Okay. Thank you. Moving along. Section 15-32, Authority to Employ Personnel and Incur Expenses. The statutory duties and responsibilities in those duties enabled in Section 15-33 herein but all within the town council, adopted town budget or as otherwise authorized by the town council. This is the town solicitor. 15-33 is claimed, 34, 35, and then 15-62 to 15-69 is reserved for anything else, and then Article 4, Comprehensive Plan, 16-70, Comprehensive Plan Incorporated by Reference. The Comprehensive Plan of the Town of Warren, as duly updated and adopted from time to time, is hereby incorporated by reference in its entirety. This section shall take effect for the purpose of conforming municipal land use decisions and for the purpose of being transmitted to the Rhode Island Director of Administration for state review upon public hearing and passage. This section shall not become effective for the purposes of guiding state agency actions until it is approved by the State of Rhode Island pursuant to Chapter 45-22.2 of the General Laws of Rhode Island, aka of the Rhode Island Comprehensive Planning and Land Use Act. That's all the changes.
I make a motion we pass Chapter 15-Planning, Article 2, to its second reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Very good. Moving on to public hearing. Public hearing, PH1, public hearing for the Town of Warren Comprehensive Plan. Good evening, and we see our planner is in the building. Thank you and welcome.
Sure, thank you. Herb Durfee, former town planner, sorry. Just want to introduce the plan from the standpoint that it has gone through the exercise of being prepared with assistance from Allison Ring, the municipality's consultant, with tremendous help with the planning board, and then other folks, members of the public that have participated throughout the process. The planning board has held its public hearing. At one point, they held just a joint session with the town council to go over the plan before it was delivered to you. It was formally received by you at your last meeting with the idea of, or the meeting before, I honestly can't remember that, but it was duly scheduled to be, have a hearing tonight, which is under statutorily required. Due to a little bit of a snafu in the agenda, it does not have on it the actual adoption of the plan tonight, so there's a little snafu in the agenda in its preparation. So for tonight, the limit of your ability is the public hearing on the comprehensive plan, and then you would have to act at a future council meeting to do the adoption and request that staff prepare it for formal delivery to the state for its approval process.
And the deadline for that is?
There is no statutory deadline in the statute with regard to when it has to be submitted from that standpoint. Effectively, once the staff would button it up as quickly as it could after the adoption process, and then the state has a certain amount of days that it has to render its decision, but it's quite a few days.
So if we were to have the public hearing tonight, all of the discussion, we could adopt it at the November 12th meeting?
Unless you schedule a special meeting between now and then, that would be the earliest, yes.
Okay.
Before I go to the public section, does anyone else have a question for the solicitor? I mean, I'm sorry...
And I will, and I will say, if I may interrupt Mr. Vice Chair, we do have Allison Ring here tonight, so if you would like the public to have a quick presentation of koala bears, we'll be happy to provide that to you. But anyway, she is here if you need, say, a five, 10-minute presentation that might help to...
Yeah, what's the format going to be?
So essentially, if you would like to have that presentation, she's here to provide that to you. Beyond that, you would move to open the public hearing, entertain public comment. If you are satisfied at that point that you're comfortable in understanding how you'd want to go, you can have some level of discussion on what you heard, but anything as it pertains to the adoption should wait until your subsequent meeting.
Thank you. I personally feel it's more than appropriate to have Ms. Ring do her presentation if I see no objections from other council members. Ms. Ring? Do you have any... Yeah, we're good?
I think it's okay.
Okay, yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just make sure you speak.
So I'm happy to be here tonight to present to you the final draft of the twenty twenty-four Warren Comprehensive Plan. It's been over two years of dedicated effort by the planning board. This update, since it's been quite a time, quite some time since you've had your current comp plan, this update really is a complete rewrite because since then, state law has changed, state standards have changed. So this update is an effort to meet those current state standards and also make sure that it addresses the current and anticipated future needs of the community. So what is a comp plan? Let me go to the next. So sometimes referred to comp plan as short, right? A local comprehensive plan is a land use planning document. It guides growth and development within a community. It serves as both a vision for the community's future and a policy document that outlines how land use should be used within a community. The comprehensive plan provides a framework for decision making by local officials. It includes an analysis of existing conditions, establishes community goals and policies as well as implementation actions to achieve those goals. So the next slide outlines state approval. So comprehensive planning in Rhode Island is governed by state laws, I mentioned. Municipalities are required to adopt a comprehensive plan not less than every ten years. It had previously been every five years. There are required elements and content that must be included, so I'll go through those elements. Comprehensive plans are to be over a twenty year planning horizon. They serve as a foundation for local zoning, so your zoning and your comprehensive plan must be consistent. They, as we were drafting the elements, we sent them to statewide planning for their initial review. They provided written comments, and so this final draft attempts to address all the comments that the state has already provided to the town to hopefully ensure that once local adoption occurs and it's submitted to the state, that it'll be approved without the need for amendments in the future. So the elements of a comprehensive plan, you have land use that describes your current land uses and future land use goals and policies. The housing element assesses local housing needs in Warren and outlines strategies to try to address those needs. The economic development element will highlight the economic strengths and opportunities for growth and agriculture is addressed within that element. The transportation element will assess multiple transportation modes within the community and future infrastructure needs. Natural resources element, inventories, natural resources such as wetlands and strategies to address their protection. We have the open space and recreation element that identifies all open space in town and assesses your recreational programs and recreational needs for all residents. The public facilities and services element evaluates public infrastructure and needs such as utilities, schools and emergency services. Historic and cultural resources element recognizes historic and cultural assets within Warren and plans for their preservation. And finally, the natural hazards and climate change element, this is a newly required element that addresses that increasingly important focus area of planning. And finally, we have the, within each of those elements, there's goals, policies and action items. And then newly required is a standalone implementation program. So all those implementation actions that are within each of those elements are now in a spreadsheet. This is one page of that spreadsheet, just as an example. But within the implementation program, all those actions are further detailed with a responsible party being assigned, which would be someone from municipal government, whether it be a department or a board. A timeframe, short, medium and long term, over the ten years of the plan. And then a priority, so one, two and three, with one being the highest priority. So it, you know, again, it's two hundred page documents, a lot to go through, but I just wanted to highlight some kind of trends or specific themes that emerged during the planning process and issues that kind of kept coming up to surface that we, we wanted to address within the plan. So one foremost being resiliency. Having just completed the market to Medicom plan when I came on board to help with this update, that was something that was requested as being a focus area. So you'll notice that the plan, the market to Medicom plan is woven throughout each of your elements. There's even within the introduction, a table that describes how the concepts within the market to Medicom plan are also advancing the goals of each of your elements. Other themes that emerged during the plan update process were, of course, affordable housing and the need and support for affordable housing and attainable housing within Warren, but also the, you know, strong desire for Warren to maintain local review authority over proposed affordable housing developments and some, some discussion within the housing element of how like you know, advocating for state law changes to improve affordable housing developments and, and outcomes and making them more successful locally. Protecting and preserving the town's historic and cultural resources and, of course, downtown historic district. Making sure new development and redevelopment is consistent with the scale and character of the surrounding historic context in which it's to be developed. Addressing parking demands downtown and implementing parking management strategies. Those have been incorporated into your transportation element, along with a number of action items to promote bicycling as a safe transportation alternative. And then within your economic development element, there are certain focus areas that are highlighted, economic nodes, you say, that would, for example, you know, promoting and protecting waterfront, working waterfront businesses and land juices as lo, as well as the Parker Mill area improvements there as far as aesthetic and transportation improvements, circulation improvements within the Parker Mill neighborhood. So those are also some themes to highlight. This is the table I, I mentioned that is within your introduction that, that highlights the market to Medicom plan and how each, within each of your elements, how it, it promotes the goals of those elements. And then another key component of a comprehensive plan is the future land use map. This is one of the required maps. You'll notice there might be twenty maps within there. But this future land use map is, is a policy document. It outlines how the town land uses throughout the town. Specifically, this update identifies the market, the Medicom project area as a special planning district. This is consistent with your market to Medicom plan, identifying that area, you can see it in black as being a special planning district where form based code could be implemented to promote mixed use development, additional housing units at potentially higher densities. And then the market, the the most vulnerable portion, not the entire Market Street area, but the most vulnerable portion is identified on the future land use map with a retreat overlay designation to discourage like future public investment in that area. And then within the future land use map, all the designations you see there on the map are described within the land use element. And any changes to bring those future land use map designations and the zoning map and into conformance and consistency are outlined there as well, and those would be a next, an implementation phase of the comp plan. So for next steps, so your public hearing is tonight, following local adoption. It will be sent, as I've mentioned, to statewide planning for their final review and certification that it meets state requirements. And then the town can work towards implementing. But in the meantime, it is your locally adopted comprehensive plan that you can utilize as your decision making tool before the state approves it. So it will be your comp plan, yes.
That's a quick question. So sections have all been sent to the state already?
Yes.
Okay, so they, they've already commented on them and essentially kind of approved them?
They've identified, they have, there's letters on file, you can see where they've identified areas that like approvability concerns and then recommendations. So we, of course, address any approvability concerns. Whether or not we've approved them satisfactory, we don't know, but we feel that we have, but so those letters, the other, they outline any areas of concern that they, so we went in and made some changes to the draft to address those.
Thank you.
And those changes are reflected in this eight thirteen copy?
Yes, yes, those kind of were throughout the process. As we completed, completed draft sections, they were sent to statewide planning, so over a number of many months and years, yeah. So implementation, you know, should be reviewed annually with the help of that that spreadsheet, the implementation program can be an interactive tool that the community utilizes. And then there is a five year implementation status report that's due to statewide planning. That's the newer requirement, once they moved it from five year comp plans to ten years, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question for Ms. De Sisto.
Absolutely.
Anthony, has the harbor management plan been approved?
Yes, it has.
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, the town has correspondence to that effect from the executive directors of coastal resource management council. Although I will mention one other thing. Statutorily, it's not a requirement that the town have accepted harbor management to adopt the comprehensive.
Swing to the public for now, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Ring, for your wonderful presentation. I want to entertain a motion to open up the portion of the public hearing.
So, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Folks, before we get into the public hearing comment, I just want, again, want to remind you that anyone coming forward, please just address all your questions, concerns, comments to the council members. Refrain from engaging with conversation with members of the public. Nobody's going to put a restriction on a time, everyone will have an opportunity to speak. So at this time, the public hearing is opened if anyone wants to speak in favor or.
Mr. Tondo, can I make a recommendation?
Yes, please.
That we have those in favor speak first, those against speak next, instead of having it turned into a every other one. I, I think it's a better format.
Fair enough, yeah.
In favor of, of adopting the plan? Correct.
Yeah, and it just, yeah.
As it is.
Yes, okay, so.
Yeah, no confusion. You're in favor.
I'm going to do the letters after. I only have one before me. Where's the second one? Yeah. I'll do the letters after. This one? Oh, this is the fiftieth anniversary waterfront district. That's comprehensive plan. Yeah, okay, yep, fair enough. All right, so anyone individual that's interested in speaking in favor of the comprehensive adoption, please come forward. And we see an individual coming forward. Good evening. Please just state your name for the record.
It's Frederick Massey, I'm chairman of the Warren Planning Board. Two years plus of six planning directors, almost as many town managers. It's been a long, strange trip. But it's done, and it's done the right way. It's done transparently. It's done with public hearings. Every element was gone through at great length by members of the planning board. This is clearly to me, a plan that reflects thought, care and concern for the quality of life in the town of Warren. Not only today, but for future generations, most of whom I probably won't see. But that, the, to me, the important element here is that this is fundamental to the protection of our town from the forces that would choose to help themselves rather than the community at large. We have been in a struggle for the last several years of, over the comprehensive permit that was brought to this town by the state legislature. It has created one of the most heart wrenching and difficult and emotional times of my over sixteen years on the planning board. It is something that threatens our way of life, the way that it's currently written and currently used and essentially against us. So this plan is the beginning. It's not the end. It's, one hopes it's the beginning of the end that we can use as a springboard to protect our town to have managed affordable housing come in, but within the construct of what Warren residents want. And that's essentially was our guiding light throughout this whole process. How do we meet the needs of the citizens of Warren, the residents of Warren and our visitors in the best possible way? And I believe that this plan reflects that thinking. So I urge you to adopt it at your next meeting. But equally important, I think it's, I, I want you to know that the kind of thinking that goes into this and the kind of participation that we received from a great many people here who came night after night to this, not just members of the planning board, but residents as well.
To, to that point, the public was open, you, you were encouraging the public participation throughout the whole process.
We did, and we took into consideration what we heard. Quite often, we couldn't necessarily respond right then and there, but we took copious notes, went through what people had said about what we were doing and then incorporated that in, which also then was given, they were given yet another chance to take a look at it. So this has been an open and honest proposal, which is something that I think is, is crucial to democracy. You know, that is, that's the, the basis of good democracy, open and transparency. And I believe we've, we've met our charge for that. So I thank you for the time that you've given to this in terms of being able to read it. And I thank the members of the town who have also done the same thing. So there it is.
Thank you.
Mr. Tondo?
Yes.
I have another question for Mr. De Sisto. You were late in arriving and your partner gave a, a, his opinion and opinion from your office, but you agree that the wording on the agenda tonight means the council can't take an action?
Right.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the, we see someone else coming forward? Good evening. Again, just please state your name.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sarah Weed, and I'm delighted to tell you that I've lived at twenty-three Bridge Street for forty-four years this month.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Wow.
I want to urge you to approve the comprehensive plan as written, including dropping the voluntary nature of the historic district commission. In the nineteen nineties, I was a member of the study committee that researched, discussed and recommended to the council the creation of the HDC. At that point, it was twenty years after national recognition of Warren's historic waterfront district, and much damage had been done to our historic housing stock and business storefronts through demolition and poor, inauthentic renovations. The majority of the study committee felt that the public needed to follow the advice of the commission on only a voluntary basis, and I disagreed, but the majority ruled. After the creation of the HDC, I have witnessed four decades of enhancement to house and business exteriors. I have seen hundreds of buildings restored or renovated with the help of the HDC. Warren has built a very positive reputation in the New England region for its accessible waterfront, beautiful historic buildings. waterfront, beautiful historic buildings, and conserved lands. I have seen many restaurants, home buyers, and tourists come to Warren, taking advantage of and enjoying the preserved historic environment of our town, and at the same time, enhancing our tax base and providing jobs. This is because many homeowners and businesses have received advice and guidance from the voluntary HDC on renovation techniques, repairs, replacement materials, retention of ornamentation, and other aspects of building preservation. On Bridge Street especially, I have seen the benefits of the HDC. A small 1760 cottage across the street, a 1904 property that is larger than ours, and a variety of other houses have been improved with attention from the HDC, enhancing the look, feel, and appeal of our neighborhood. In addition, the HDC has provided tax credits to homeowners who put the commission's guidance into practice. My husband and I have gone before the commission three times, including one project that added 450 square feet to our house. Their advice meant that our projects protected the streetscape of our neighborhood. We benefited from the tax credits that were available because we followed the HDC advice. The taxes, the tax relief was spread over five years and reduced the cost of restoration or construction. Our town taxes have gone up, but that is the result of many factors, including inflation, adding square footage, town needs, et cetera. Who can isolate the impact of the restoration of our house into that mix? The comprehensive plan is a blueprint for the functioning, aspirations, and future projects of our town. Now is the time, after a very long wait, for the town council to approve the plan as written, including the transition to a historic district commission without voluntary in its name. And to, considering the snap flu on the agenda tonight, I hope that you'll have an emergency meeting to approve the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Del on the favor side? Yes, come on up. Yep.
So I'm Joan Coltrane. I live in Twissett and own a lovely old two family home on Church Street. And we are aware that there will be some objection to removing the term voluntary from our historic district commission and our historic district designation. We understand, and I also should say that I'm a member of the Warren Preservation Society Board. We, so when I say we, I mean we collectively as the board. We understand that there are concerns about the cost of renovation and about potential increases in the cost of insuring a home in the historic district. But I'd like to clarify the two of those issues. I know that there was a letter that came to a member of the town council that argued that if we remove voluntary from our historic district designation, all the properties within the historic district will be more expensive to insure. So I did a little research, and that's simply not true. If your home or property is on the National Register of Historic Places, yes, it will be expensive to insure. The only property in Warren that's on the National Register of Historic Places is the Methodist Church. All other properties in the historic district are contributing structures. So when we remove voluntary from our historic district designation, it will not change the cost of insuring your homes or your business properties in the historic district. If we're concerned about the cost of insuring our homes or our properties, we should be thinking about looking at our carbon footprint and how that then might affect our climatic, series of climatic disasters that we seem to be in the midst of. But removing voluntary from the historic district designation will have no impact in and of itself in the cost of insuring our homes. The second point I wanted to make is that when we make this change, and when the comp plan is approved, things will not change with regard to property owners living in the historic district. I mean that they will still be given the opportunity to come before the historic district commission, they'll be guided with respect to renovation, most, most projects are eligible for tax credits. This is the current engagement of the historic district commission with property owners. Removing the term voluntary won't change that. The historic district commission will continue to function as it has with, in the last, well, since 2013, over 300 applications have come before the historic district commission, with very few exceptions. They have been approved, and restoration has been, has gone forward. So you might ask yourself, well, if nothing is going to change, why then does it matter? Why don't we just leave voluntary in our designation? And I wanted to speak to that very briefly. If we remove voluntary from our historic district, first, we are the only voluntary historic district in the state of Rhode Island. There are many. We are the only voluntary one. If you are a recognized historic district, you are then eligible to become a certified local government or to, to, to acquire that designation. CLGs are entities that are recognized and organized by the National Park Service. Being a certified local government comes with a number of advantages, funding advantages, technical advantages, et cetera. We are not eligible for those advantages because we're voluntary. Removing the term then makes us eligible. So I did a little research. I wanted to see, are there any CLG, other CLGs in Rhode Island? How many are there? And what, what various municipalities have, have pursued this certification? There are 18, at least 18 CRGs in Rhode Island. I could read the list of all of the towns and municipalities. I won't bore you with all of that. But clearly, it's an advantage. It'll be an advantage for the town of Warren. It'll be an advantage for our historic district. We will no longer be the only voluntary historic district in the state of Rhode Island. So to qualify for, for this certified local government status, we must have a historic district zoning ordinance and a historic district commission. We have a commission. We don't have the zoning ordinance because we're voluntary. So I, I encourage the town council to consider the advantages of removing the term voluntary from our historic district as currently written in our comprehensive plan in the cultural and, let me get this right, cultural, historic and cultural resources section of our comprehensive plan. I recognize there are people opposed. I respect their opinions, but I think their opposition is largely centered in a misunderstanding about what this will actually, what changes will actually take place for property owners. And essentially, there will be, there will be no changes, the cost of insurance won't go up, there'll still be a need for the historic district commission to provide guidance on exterior renovations, and we can be a CLG. We can receive funding, we can receive technical assistance. It can only benefit Warren from our perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. De Sisto, will there still be an appeal process?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak in favor? I see Mr. Bolster. So you're going to do the duty, so I don't have to read it?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Please identify.
That was, that was always my intent.
Yes.
Good evening, members of the town council. This is the 50th anniversary of the Warren Waterfront National Register Historic District. We stand on the shoulders of America's pioneering historic preservationists. The grand dame of historic preservation, Antoinette Downing, Warren's historic district champions like Bonnie Warren, Walter Nebiker, Rick Greenwood, and Lombard Posey, who are all gone, and Mac Woodward, Robert Lynch, and Ed DeBerg, who are still with us. By all metrics, from preserving our history, generating investment and tax revenue, generating businesses and jobs, and defending the town's identity, Warren's historic district has been a resounding success. The town of Warren, state and federal governments, various foundations, Roger Williams University, Massasoit Historical Association, Warren Preservation Society, Warren Heritage Foundation, Warren's residents and local businesses have invested 50 years of work and millions of dollars to preserve and restore Warren's historic district. Americans are starving for authenticity and are now building replica old towns to mimic the authenticity that Warren already has. Spanning many periods of history over the last four centuries, plus the 10,000 years of Poconocat history, Warren is blessed with a natural and built record of its history that should be protected for future generations. For 11 years now, review of exterior alterations within the historic district has been required, and negative predictions have not come true. Of the 325 applications, 321 were approved, four were denied, and three were appealed. 78 projects took advantage of the historic tax credit program, which has incentivized millions of dollars in restoration work within the district. The committee ensures the appropriateness of design and materials used, as well as the quality of the work. It also reviews all state proposals townwide, like Ridot's Broken Bridge and Palmer River Bridge projects. Warren's historic district now has a peculiar collection of ordinances that has evolved over 50 years and is often confusing to property owners, architects, builders, realtors, et cetera. The Warren Voluntary Historic District Committee that oversees these ordinances also struggles with explaining to applicants how it all works. The word voluntary is misleading and should be removed. And similar to the Warren Creek Commission, Warren Harbor Commission, and Warren Conservation Commission, the name should be simplified to the Warren Historic Commission. Last fall, homeowners and professionals brainstormed about how to best preserve Warren's historic resources, and their input is reflected in this plan. It has been a community based process and represents the extensive work of Warren's planning staff, legal staff, planning board, historic committee members, state preservation staff, and public comments. Each recommendation was put forward with much research and thought to reflect Warren's rich heritage, the residents who live here, and the town's economic well-being. So we support the new comprehensive plan. Warren's historic district, excuse me, Warren's historic resources are the most important part of our built environment and should be protected for future generations. Sincerely, the members of the historic district committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in favor of speaking on the comprehensive? You're in favor of speaking, or please come forward? Want to make sure the batting order stays correct. Please identify yourself. Good evening.
We're Barry and Mary Ann Lowe, and we reside at 154 Water Street in Warren.
Welcome.
We support the Warren Voluntary Historic Commission, and particularly the removal of voluntary from the title. We have had a positive interaction before the commission regarding work to the exterior of our home. We moved to Warren in 1970, attracted to Warren by the treasure trove of historic homes. We purchased a home on Liberty Street, and at that time, many local folks had a negative view of the neighborhood, as there were many rundown buildings and seedy bars. Through the efforts of many individuals, along with the Massasoit Historical Association and the Warren Preservation Society, and the guidance of the Warren Voluntary Historic District Commission, the neighborhood has been revitalized, and it is now the heart and soul of the town of Warren. Now 50 years after first coming to Warren, when recently making a purchase of an item that required delivery from a big box store on Route 6, when I gave my address on Water Street in Warren to the salesperson, the response was, you are so lucky to live there. I wish I lived there. Warren can hold its head high with its vision for the future and the continued guidance of the Warren Historic District Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please come forward. Good evening, and just identify yourself.
Yes.
Please, thank you.
Eileen Collins, serve on the Voluntary Historic District Committee. I don't really know how many years at this point. It's maybe been 20. And also the president of the Preservation Society, and, you know, also have a lot of experience, you know, restoring historic homes. And I do realize the expense is very difficult. But that being said, I do believe that with the right guidance and what our committee has been able to provide is, we are open to using alternative materials in different situations. I feel that we've helped people make better decisions about design, keeping the original, what makes a house special in Warren. I don't feel that we've been overly aggressive in that way. I think we have more people applying for building permits, which I years ago thought, gee, nobody really gets a building permit here. But now, you know, people come in, they get their permits, they come to us, and I think they leave our committee 99% of the time saying, well, I hadn't thought about that, or yeah, that was a good suggestion, or, you know, glad to work with us. And the tax credits are really just a bonus to sort of offset of, you know, what we're trying to accomplish here. And, you know, I just see like the difference in the town, and I really would appreciate the melding of, you know, the belief in our committee and what our committee can provide and coordinating with the town, because I always feel that it was always this adversarial kind of relationship. And, you know, we're trying to do good things, we're, you know, and I agree that, you know, some people may be against restoring their homes, but no one, anyone who lives here is pretty much grandfathered in to what they, where they are. You don't like, if you buy into the, you know, when it becomes a more registered district, you know, when you buy in, you would have the information about if you're going to do any alterations, please get a building permit and come in front of our committee. And I understand that some people don't want to do that, but I do think that Warren sort of struggles for structure. And I, I believe that we have really added that structure and created a more positive view of the town and have brought businesses here because it's a beautiful area. And, you know, sometimes takes people coming from the outside to recognize the charm and the beauty, and also people that grew up here. I've met so many people and, you know, really enjoyed the camaraderie of the community. So I hope that you'll, you know, take this into consideration when you make your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come up and speak in favor of the comp plan being adopted in its present condition? Seeing none, I'm going to pivot the portion of the public comment to anyone that would like to speak in oppose, opposition of the comprehensive plan. Please come forward. And again, just please identify yourself.
Louis Regal, 12 Taddy Avenue.
Good evening.
It's so much easier to go with the flow. But anyways, and I commend everyone that spoke, everyone that spoke up here, they're 100% correct. I would take issue with, with Mr. Massey said that, you know, everybody's been given proper notice. We didn't go through with the financial crisis that we had, and I didn't decide to run the town council. I wouldn't even have read the comprehensive plan. So, you know, if the notice is only given in the Warren Times, not everybody buys the Warren Times. And, you know, we had this discussion maybe 20 years ago, and we had everybody here. It was a heated debate, and it was decided. It was a heated debate, and it was decided that on a volunteer basis was the way that it should work. Now, if we want to bring this up again, then we should give everyone notice that's in that district, just like you would do a zone change. If you're going to do a zone change, you're going to give everybody written notice, and they're going to come here and give their opinions. Now, I'm all for democracy, and if we get a majority that decides to do that, then that's the route we should go. But right now, I don't think that's, that's what's happening. Right now, yes, I understand that it's by ordinance, and that ordinance can be changed. It's been working out, and that's fine, but when you put in a comprehensive plan, even though it's not a law, it's the will, it seems like it's the vision of the people, and I don't agree that it's the vision of the people. So, again, I commend everyone that spoke. Everyone spoke, what they said, I, I, they're a hundred percent, but the only thing is, is that what the rest of the people that live in that district, is that, is that what they want? And I think we should, we should respect everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Please come forward. Good evening, and again, just state your name.
Tara Thibodeau, six oh five Main Street. I was not prepared to speak on this. I was hoping my husband was going to do it. But, so, I'm not sure if I'm for it or against it, because I've lived, we've lived, lived on Main Street for close to thirty-two years. Sorry, I hate speaking in public. And we've raised six children there. We have replaced windows, we've put on addition, we've put on siding, all on one income. And so, and I obviously agree with, I love Warren, I'm in favor of historic value. My family's been here for six generations, soon to be seven, and
Congratulations.
Thank you. And so, obviously, I care what happens to Warren. But what about the financial burden that you're putting on the people who live there? Maybe, as it was said, grandfathered in, but, and to Mr. Rego's point, I was never notified as someone who lives in this district and works, actually works for the town as well, that this was even being considered to be taken out as a mandatory district. I appreciate you asking the question of if it can still be appealed, does it still give us the opportunity? But you're changing the demographics in town. If you're going to make these, like, we could have never put in thirty-four windows, the ones that we put in, and lived in that house and raised a family. It would never have happened. So my question is financial, you know, the status quo, how does this financially affect people living in this area? So, that's why I'm not sure if I'm for or against it, because, like, would I be able to live there? Like, would I be able to raise a family there right now? That's my question.
So, I think it's been pretty well, if I may
You may.
Explain this evening that it's, it's semantics. The removal of the word voluntary does not change the way the district has operated or will operate. There will be no change. So your ability to, to live in your home as you do will not be any different in a year than it was a year ago, other than just the prevailing changes in the economy and the climate and whatnot. This is purely words, a word being removed from a title, which will give us the opportunity to be eligible for more funding, more opportunity for greater benefits. So, if you didn't know, and if people feel like they didn't have proper notification, heard, absolutely heard, I'm not sure what we could do to publicize this more. I know it's a conversation that I've been hearing for years, since I've been on the council, and more and more recently, just because it's on, it's on the minds of so many. And we have it posted publicly by law and, and have advertised by law, but we do maybe need to consider better ways of conveying what's going on to a public who may not know where to look for that information. But it still remains true that this, this word being removed does not change the way anything will be operating going forward, if this plan is in fact adopted as written. It does not change anything. In fact, it makes improvements. So, that's, that's, the finances of it, I mean, some, some years' work is good, some years' work isn't so good. Here's the price of materials is higher, some years it's lower, some, some years, you know, you can find people to work for, for a really good wage, and some years you can't. Some, it, it's, that's just part of the, the cycle of living in a historic community like, like Warren. It's, things have never been stable and the same. Nothing is predictable, but this, in fact, the, the, the way that this, this document exists will not change any way that the district commission operates.
Thank you. Just before, we, I just want to know if there's anybody else in the public that would like to come forth and speak in opposition of us adopting the comprehensive permit plan in its present form? Yes, please come forward, and I will get back to you. Good evening and welcome. Please just identify yourself.
My name is Richard Madden. I'm a member of the planning board in alternate. I love that six, sixty-two, I'm sorry, Love and Kennicott Avenue, thinking of my old address.
That's fine.
Was also here
Good evening.
Seems like we're putting the cart before the horse. Why should the comprehensive plan make a change to local code? The commission was established by code, right? So shouldn't you address that issue first and approve the change before planning, commission changes the comprehensive plan?
May I respond? I'm going to, I'm going to respond, because you bring up an excellent question that I had a conversation with the solicitor, knowing that I would be sitting as the chair of this meeting this evening. We're not, the comprehensive plan, we're adopting it, and by statute, because what I wanted to know is whether or not this should be going to the entire community in a voting referendum. And the answer was no. We are charged as members of council of adopting the plan. So right now, in the public hearing format, we're entertaining individuals who wish to speak in opposition or wish to speak in favor. So you bring up a very good point, but it's exactly by statute what we're doing. So you may not agree with
Approving of what's here, yes.
Yes.
However, is it right? No.
Well, again, we may not see eye to eye on this subject matter, but I definitely had this conversation with the solicitor. Looks like he's going to speak too, or maybe he'll speak later. Yeah, and
Mr. Clenick
Yeah, sure.
He's running away.
I may
Yeah. So we're, we're in touch with the doctor.
Planning board is an advisory board to the council.
True, yes.
So the planning board has done their work.
Originally, the volunteer was in the planning boards.
Correct.
Correct, that's what I'm saying. You're talking about process.
Yes.
You said the cart's in front of the horse. Now, the planning board is an advisory board to the council. They made their recommendations when they revised our comp plan.
Okay.
So now
It's a recommendation.
Correct, so now it's up to us whether we want to add, detract, we could say we're against the whole thing, we could say
You can add or subtract.
Correct, so
And
The process, I believe, is not
That particular word should be included, continued as voluntary, until your board makes a change to the rules.
Well, their advice to us was to change.
Change.
Yeah, but you haven't proposed a motion to make the change. So how can you make a change without
Mr. DeSisto, I think you need to speak about the legal process, because I, I, I'm not just going to go back and
Okay.
I don't know how to answer your question.
We spoke about this.
Yes. Everything that Alice said is, is accurate and correct. Your comprehensive plan is a blueprint and a direction to the town as to how its ordinances should be structured. There's an implementation plan as to what you need to do. Part of what you have before you is an implementation plan as to the historic district area. One of the recommendations is, is to remove the word voluntary from the Historic District Commission. One of the other recommendations that you have that you have to implement is that you've got to restructure your ordinances. Currently, right now, when the statement is made, but there won't be much change that's going on. There would be a change to the structure of the ordinances, because a, a good part of what the Voluntary Historic District Commission does now is, is operating as mandatory under the demolition ordinance. What would happen is, is you would have a zoning ordinance now that would have a historic district component. Now, I'm not going to use the term overlay district, because I, I don't think that they're compatible. There's actually a statute that says what you have to have in a historic district commission. And the statement that was made that there's eighteen of them out there, that's correct. Some cities like Providence have more than one historic district, and they have standards for each. So what would happen is, is there would be a more comprehensive scheme as to what is done and what is not done. Some of the statements that were made, that there would be more, more direction and more clarity for property owners in a historic district. If you take a look at the statutes, that's correct, because what happens is, is there's guidelines for it, so you know ahead of time what happens before you even apply for a building permit. And that's what happens here. So what's the process? If the comprehensive plan is approved, with these provisions in there, the next step will be to amend the zoning ordinance to reflect what's in the comprehensive plan and the future land use map.
Who would the appeal be through if somebody
Does it still go to the zoning board?
The statute, the statute, which is forty-five twenty-four point one dash one at SEC, that goes to the zoning board. And in fact, that's how it operates in Bristol, Providence, all the other ones, North Kingston for Wickford and those, those kind of things.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Not at this time. Is there anyone else? Yes, please. Yes. We're not doing that tonight. We're not going to yell from the, the gallery. No. Yeah.
So Tony, if you want to do
Well, actually, ask, ask us to, please, direct your question.
Direct the council.
Yep.
Love that guy. But if, if we're going to be doing a, would it be considered a zone change, and would everyone have to be given notice, and would you have a public hearing? Is my question. Yes. Why didn't you say that earlier?
You should just ask the question, no.
No, but, but that's all I'm asking for. That's all I'm asking for. Let's, let's respect everyone's rights. That's all. If that's the case, then we're fine. But if that is the case, like the gentleman said, are we putting the cart before the horse?
No.
Because if, if, if you do the, do that, and you have a vote, or you have a public hearing, that's the will of the people. Right now, is it really the will of the people?
It's in the public hearing.
Right, and it's, comprehensive plan is a vision of the town. So that vision, is that vision narrowly minded to one or two people, or is it townwide? Is my question
You confuse me in regards to your concern about a public hearing. This is a public hearing.
This is a public
You were notified you're here, participating in the public process.
This is a public hearing for the comprehensive plan, but I'm talking about, for the historic district. If we wanted to change it to a, from a volunteer to mandatory
Now, in the future, will individual ordinances require council appointment, I mean, council process in a public hearing? Yes, that's what the solicitor's referring to. So tonight, or when this passes, Mr. DeSisto, correct me if I'm wrong.
Adopted.
When this is adopted, there's going to be more work that the councils will have to participate in, from the boards, where we want to implement the changes through ordinance.
Sure. So if this is implemented, I think the next step would be to, to try to change the, the ordinance into a mandatory, correct, by ordinance? And at that point, you would give notice to all the residents that own property in that area, and then you'd have a public hearing?
The word mandatory is not
It's not going to be like if somebody is pulling a building permit and everyone within two hundred feet will be notified.
So I guess the difference right now is, and to your point, right now, you could change that ordinance, that demolition ordinance, and you're back to voluntary, very simply.
Well, it may change in the future, but right What we're talking about right now
Is a vision.
Is just taking the word voluntary out, out. And I just want to remind everybody here that, that the district has been running as a required district. You're required to go in, in front of the commission. It's been running that way for eleven years.
Sure.
It's been, okay, let me finish.
No, I, I know.
Eleven years it's been running that way. And you've heard the, the numbers that have been thrown around, three hundred and twenty-five applications, only four rejections. There hasn't been tremendous pushback on this. The reason it's being suggested to take the word voluntary out is so that the public is not confused about the fact that they have to pull a building permit and then go in front of the commission. Nothing changes. It's, it remains the same at this point. I'm just saying. I, I don't know, I just want to make sure that's clear, like
I'm pretty involved in the community, and I was there when it was established.
Right.
And I wasn't really, I wasn't aware that it was a mandatory district for eleven years. And when I talk to a lot of people
That's a good thing, right? Because that means nobody's been
Well, it's not
You know, correct. It's evolved and the process has changed. It's not the original
I know, but there are a lot of people that
The fact, the fact that nobody's coming to you or screaming is, means that no one's pushing back on it. And they actually, people find it beneficial to go in front of the commission.
They're not pushing back on it until they need it. And I have a lot of respect for these people, and I am all for a hundred percent for historic preservation. I'm not saying anything negative of them. All I'm saying is, just be fair to everyone that, that, that it's going to affect. That's all I'm saying. But I think we have that answer.
Well, let me
Please come back.
Let me clarify it even
Yeah.
Can I sit down?
You can sit down.
Please.
Yes, thank you.
I just want to make sure that my comments are entirely clear with what, what's going on over here, because when you have a comprehensive plan, as you know, you've read it, there's an, there's implementation guidelines on this. So what you're referring to is on page twenty-one, historical cultural resources and policies, and AHC two, adopt recommended amendments to local historic district regulations, including those that may be necessary to ensure compliance with section forty-five dash twenty-four point one dash ten, and remove the term voluntary and district from the commission name in regulations to bring greater clarity. So I think what you have here with the comprehensive plan is a series of steps. What I had referred to previously was section forty-five dash twenty-four point one dash two, historic district zoning authorized. That states in order to carry out the purposes of this chap, chapter, each city and town has the authority to establish, change, layout, and define districts, which are deemed to be of historical or architectural value, in the same manner as those cities and towns are presently empowered to establish or change areas and classifications of zoning. So what you have here is a series of steps, and I'm at the last step. That was the answer that I had. If you're going to have a standard historic district, like the eighteen that were referenced, in order to implement that, it would be in the same manner as an amendment to the zoning ordinance. When you change a map, everybody that's affected by the map and within two hundred feet gets notice of the public hearing. Okay? So that was the answer to my question. That was accurate. However, I think what the discussion has been is, is some preliminary steps, which is, take a look at your existing ordinances, remove the voluntary, see if there are any other implementation steps that you do before you reach that step. This is going to be a lot of work after this. The comprehensive plan is the directions on what you're supposed to do and the sequence in, in what you do it on, and I, I want to make sure that I was clear on that.
Thank you.
Anyone else in matter?
Nope, you're, you're fine. Is there anyone else? Yes, please come forward. Good evening, just I, state your name, please, for the record. Good evening. Just I state your name, please, for the record.
Tom Flanagan at forty-six Washington.
I have your letter.
Oh, thank you.
I am going to read. Would you like to read it yourself?
No, all right. I don't want to take up any more than council town.
Yes, I was gonna wait till the end and I was gonna read it into the record.
Okay. Maybe I could come back then if there's any responses you want.
Absolutely. Yes. Is there anyone else as a member of the public that would like to come forward and speak? Seeing none, we're going to keep the public portion open because I do have a letter from Mr. Flanagan that he wished to have read it into the record. Uh, it's dated October third, twenty twenty-four to the Warren Town Council regarding changes to the master plan for historic designations. A response to the letter to the editor on page six of the Wednesday, October second issue of the Warren Times Gazette. Please consider the insurance implications for changing our historic district designation. Insurance companies are raising their rates significantly and sometimes radically. The trend is broadly driven in coastal towns due to anticipated weather, intensification through changing environmental factors. Historic properties face an even greater insurance challenge. Given that reproduction costs are significantly greater than replacement costs, some insurers refuse to insure historic property in mandatory historic districts. Without issuing, without insurance, our housing and the economic value of our property is at risk. It is that a resolution to this issue of rising insurance costs and sustainable insurability of our historic housing be taken into consideration before a change to the mandatory district comes to a vote. At an earlier time in our history, such a change would be welcome. Today, the change puts many of us at great financial risk. Signed, Tom Flanagan, forty-six Washington Street. At this moment in time, I think it's appropriate to close the public hearing.
No.
We want to keep it open?
Yes.
Okay.
You need to set eight, but when it's going to continue so you can actually take it over.
It seems like it's going to be the next November meeting unless we're going to do a special. Does anybody else from council have any comments that they would like to speak? They've all got their points out.
I would just like to confirm that Mr. Flanagan heard Ms. Coltrane's uh, statement at the beginning where you-
I I actually have a response to that though.
Okay, just because that was, it was kind of explained. So I want to be sure that-
So in the interest of fairness, I want people to have their eyes wide open and their ears wide open to what I am about to say. Not to get into a great debate of what insurance costs are or what they may be or what the financial burden may be. I also did some quick research on whether or not a historic home is more to insure. And I'm not presenting a view on one side or the other, but I came up with two main reasons why a historic home is more to insure. Material cost and the building codes. There's an article in the Washington Post that reads reference to all of these factors. The one thing that we have to understand is that insurance providers will change their rates at a moment's notice for no reason at all. That is fact. So going forward, just so you know, that materials used for historic homes are more costly than they are for replacement cost on a home that's not a historic preservation project. That's all I came up with. So with that, are we going to do a special meeting or are we going to just go to the next November meeting?
I would, I wouldn't mind if uh, um, the clerk sent out a request to the entire council to see if there was a date prior to the next council meeting, possibly sometime next week or the following week where we could take care of this. Um, I would be make myself available. Um, I have personally uh, very, no conflicts any of the evenings. The only evening is the fourteenth, which is Indigenous Peoples' Columbus Day.
Sure.
So that wouldn't be appropriate. We're not, we're not holding business that day.
Um.
But if we could find a date prior, so next week or the week after.
So just so we're clear, I also feel it would be important that all members be present.
Exactly.
And with that, because my status has changed, I am not available until the first of November on any evening going forward. I don't, and I, and I don't know if I could rearrange anything. And then that just takes us out to like, we're a week away from our council meeting. I mean, and and Carrie, I'll do my best to try and rework things, but I mean, this is an election year and it's what I'm just flat out. Um, but if I can try and rearrange something, definitely not to twenty-eight.
Well, it's going to require putting anyways.
Yeah, no, I know. We're just, we're just talking. Um, send out the request. I'll, I'll see what I can do.
Yeah, as soon as is humanly possible.
When would be the, when, when? Uh, what's today's date?
Today's the eighth.
The earliest we can do it is in eleven days.
No, I'm not, I'm not available until the end of-
Do it like Monday?
I'm not available, Joe. And I thought it would be imprudent and appropriate that we're all there and Monday's a holiday.
Well, that's the holiday, next, this Monday coming up is what we're talking about. I don't know the numbers. Sorry.
Put out the email.
Oh, yeah.
But I would do that.
Yeah.
If we, if we can do it, we'll do it.
Make the effort.
Yeah.
If we can do it.
I I will do my very best.
And we will, yeah.
But I think all of us should be prepared. Yeah, I don't think it's, yeah.
Yeah, but if we can't be, Steve, it has to be a forum.
I'm just stating my position. That's all. Yeah.
And I'm sure you respect the legality answer.
Well, we could wait till the November. I mean, what's the, is it really going to change if we wait till November?
I think because of it being, because of it being a snafu on the agenda, I unfortunately myself, the item right above this said, first reading, planning board. The next one, I looked at, I didn't see, I didn't pick up on the fact that it didn't say uh, action, discussion and action. Had I seen that, I would have hopefully-
That's fine, understood.
So so I'm coming from this from the perspective of we're not putting this off. We're actually trying to conduct the business that would have been conducted tonight had there not been the error on the two word or three words, discussion and action. So that's, that's why I'm looking at this as not an emergency. I'm not looking at it as a special. I'm looking at it as a continuation of what would have taken place tonight had there not been an error on the omission of those three words. I was prepared and still am prepared to vote and to move this on.
Sure.
So that's where I'm coming from.
Some of the typographical errors that I, you know, in the, in the document itself, who cleans that up? Housekeeping? Is that clerks or is?
Carrie.
If, if the motion is- The motion can be that that any type of graphical errors will be corrected.
Okay. Yeah. And so we're going to keep everything open. We're just, we haven't really determined when.
Yes.
So we haven't made a definite date of when it's going to be heard.
Yes. Whenever it's heard again, if there are, if there are amendments to be made, public by statute, it should be allowed to come.
A hundred percent. Yes. Okay. So we're not closing, we're not moving, we're not doing any action. We're just moving on to the next item on our agenda.
Who did what?
No, that was no motion.
No one did?
No.
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 The changes, the, the, the things that I said before, that was on a previous agenda item. That was on a different ordinance.
Yeah. Yep.
We made no changes to that.
We've made no, we've made no action on this matter.
Comprehensive plan.
May, may I make a suggestion?
Please.
Uh, just say that the public hearing will be continued to a future meeting to be determined. But discussion in action on adopting the comprehensive plan. That should be the agenda.
So moved. All right, perfect. Thank you. Moving on to petitions. Oh, sorry. Is there a second?
I will second.
Oh.
Can we vote on that? I mean, do you?
Yes.
The item. Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye. Yes, aye.
All right. All opposed? Guys have it. Moving on. We're on to petitions. P one. Request for a victulating license from North and South LLC, Jamie Nathaniel, six ninety-one Mora on Main Street, Hope of Maine, Wondred Island. Do we have?
Wait, what?
What else?
Now, we passed, that's all.
Yeah, all the, all the, uh, we already did those.
We did Hope of Maine?
Yes.
Okay.
All the ones with the F. P one, two, P one, two, five.
We're on correspondence.
We're on the correspondence. Perfect. Thank you. And again, anybody see anything from correspondence that they'd like to have?
I would like to pull C six just to recognize the member jurors, members of our budget committee, Sheila Raposa and Jim Cor. I don't know if Sheila's still here. I thought I saw her. She's right there. I would just like to say that those two are doing yeoman's work. They have given apparently eighty plus hours of their time and made some really spot on recommendations and I think have performed uh, such crucial, critical and important work, working with our town manager, working with our finance director. And it's so appreciated and um, I just wanted to publicly recognize you both. I know Jim isn't here tonight, but thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also, uh, uh, C four?
Yes.
Um, I'm just looking at the first paragraph of that and and it says, I'm writing to inform you that the CRMC has conducted a consistency review of the town of Warren New Shorm Harbor Management Plan Final Draft.
You didn't know we became part of Block Island?
I, I was not aware of that. So it it does say New Shorm and twice there.
CRMC did a little copy page and then forgot to add.
Whether that's an issue or not, I mean.
It's not. As Mr. De Sisto stated earlier, the comp plan has been approved. I mean, the harbor management plan's been approved.
Looks like our manager has a problem.
So just, just to, just to point out that there was a certain languages.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, I, I did notice that myself and I did respond to CRMC. Is that CRMC?
CRMC, yes.
Thank you. And they did send an additional letter, but this must have been the first one that got into your packet. But we did change it to the town of Warren, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from correspondence? All right, moving forward. Uh, old business. This is mine. Discussion in action regarding the process of trash pickup. Please, Mr. Wheeler, good evening. How's Mega doing?
They're doing good. Um, we had a lot of conversations, myself, town manager and the solicitor with them. Um, you know, we were working on making sure that they have extra trucks in town when the heavy days are coming, when they know what's happening. Um, we're trying to adjust how they start because they like to switch up. And I know it confuses residents because they do, they bring in two trucks that bring in and then starting on opposite sides of the town. So we do remind everybody to get their trash out by seven AM, please, um, because that's when Mega will start. So on recycling weeks, they'll have multiple trucks in town. They will be different colors. They'll have different names on them, but they're all part of Mega's parent company. That's as much as kind of we've talked about it. I know there was other questions that I think the town manager and solicitor had looked into, but as far as that goes, they haven't, we have an open dialogue with them. If there's any issues, I have a direct line to their all of the bosses over there, so.
Please let them know. I think they do a fabulous job.
I let everybody know to get their trash out the night before.
Get it out. Yep.
And and I'll continue to say, if there's any issues, please call us. I, you know, we got a pretty good working relationship that if we get it early enough, they'll go back and get it as soon as they can, so.
They've been very responsive.
Are we still doing the Warren Connect app?
We, we do. Yep. And you can put it on there or you can email me or call the office.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Um, discussion in action regarding the flooding on Central Street and Vernon Street. I know we talked about this of moving it to November because we need a little more time.
Yeah, I mean, just an update, uh, we're, we're still looking into a lot of different options. I mean, you know, with funding being as tight as it is, there's only so many things we can do. Um, you know, we have designs that Fasen O'Neill had kind of given us to implement in the future. Uh, equipment's going to be a big issue with that. I'm having the correct equipment. So we've been coming up with creative ways to either rent, purchase, borrow, whatever we need to. Um, ultimately, the winter will be a better timeframe to kind of get in there, start cleaning some stuff out that we can reach. Um, when there's hopefully less water and maybe the ground is a little harder. Some of the issues that we do have is still the easements and, you know, there's about eighteen properties that touch this that we'll kind of be working through. We kind of got, I haven't had as much time to put to it in the last month because we kind of took on that paving ground real quick, so.
But uh, I've had a few calls. So that we're going to try to get in from central east towards Seymour. We're going to try to get in to there and manually clear that ditch, correct?
We're going to try to identify the actual holdup because right now everything is completely overgrown and-
Right.
So watch. So it's finding-
When the leaves fall, you're going to walk through there and see if you can find some block spots and-
Yeah, because right now I know there's a high spot that leads towards Main Street, which is also an issue where the water is kind of pooling. So the water is not making it across Warren Boulevard.
Right.
And down towards Main Street the way it's supposed to because there is a-
It flattens out and actually-
It's kind of, there's a high point in a particular area and it's, you know, until we have the access to actually get into someone's backyard with some equipment to make it a little bit easier. So.
The answer would be to those people that you are going to try to get in there and physically clear some of the blocks.
The goal. Um.
I'm sure she called you.
Yeah, I've talked to her numerous times. We've talked a few times on like, yeah, and then ultimately the, the end of the road there, we do own, we can get in there whenever we need to.
The dead end is sent.
The dead end. I mean, there has to be stuff that gets addressed in that area. It's, it's a breeding pot of just collecting water. It's not helping the cause. So we will take a look at it. Like I said, the winter will be a better time when-
Frozen and you can get in.
Hopefully things are, you know, not raining as much.
Trying to make sure we're saying the same thing.
Yep. So we're still working on it.
Thank you.
On to the town manager. Good evening. Several things on the agenda.
Um, good evening, Mr. Vice President and members of the council. Um, so a couple of things on the agenda. Uh, the first one is um, discussion on the wastewater treatment um, heating system. If you recall, um, last time we, the meeting, we had a discussion about the system was um, not functioning uh, and that it needed to be replaced. Uh, we went out to bid on that and we had uh, one bid that came in. And that bid was from Next Gen Mechanical with a hundred and five thousand, six hundred and seventeen.
All right. Well, we need the work done. I've heard enough on the issue. Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Have you done any research? Is this like uh, reasonable vote? I mean, how do we, how do we know? Nobody else has bid it. Are they the only ones who do this kind of work? I mean?
Uh, well, for the um, as far as I know, with the, from the wastewater treatment uh, people, operators, that um, this is a pretty reasonable bid, but no one else, no one else. And then we haven't gone out to see if if there is anybody that can do it for cheaper.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Camiga, uh, Mr. Kalender, if I may?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Camiga, you're, you're here. Uh, is there any information you can supply for Ms. Cronin's, uh, all of our concerns that no other bids came in, but how do you feel about the work that's stated in the price?
So initially, there were, there were two um, bids solicited. One was a hundred and ten thousand, the other one was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Time went on, we put it out to bid again. Automatic temperature control came in at ninety thousand. Unfortunately, they missed a bid deadline. This Next Gen was the only other bid that came in at a hundred and five. So it's, it's falling within that range of what we've seen uh, for bids.
Mr. De Sisto, what are the legalities in regards to uh, rejecting this sole bid? And going back out to bid, knowing that somebody missed it? Is that?
If you reject the uh, if you reject all the bids, you can rebid it.
It's ten thousand dollars. I mean, it's, you know, right?
Yeah, fifteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen thousand. We have plenty of places to spend it. All right, um.
I mean, our, yeah, I, I, that seems like a small amount in the grand scheme of things, but fifteen thousand dollars, we could um, use to do a lot.
It's not that time critical, right?
If it's not that time critical, do you think it's likely that if you we, if we reject them all and you put it back out there, that we'll get, we'll get the bids back in?
So I think if we do that, it needs to happen immediately, only because it is getting colder. So pipes freezing in that building is a concern.
So there is a time constraint?
There's no heat in that building right now.
So we would not be able to approve this if the, if you did it tomorrow, we got some bids in, we couldn't approve it till November. Do you think that that's a safe time? Is that enough time to do it?
Probably have to wear some heavy clothing, but I think we'd be okay, you know, until then. Once the work gets started, you're, you're- Once the work gets started, you're, you're only talking probably a week to complete it.
Okay.
So we're relatively sure that we're not gonna have a disaster down there.
As long as, you know, the weather cooperates.
I mean, I wasn't aware of the other bid, so knowing that there was another bid, a motion to reject and go back out to bid.
Immediately.
Immediately, right now.
Yeah, second tomorrow.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Camiga.
Number two?
The, uh, second one is for computers here in Town Hall. This one, we do have two bids for. Um, the first one is for, uh, ten thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-five cents from Millard Tech out of Clocksburg, Maryland. And the second one, the actual, um, bid here is twelve thousand and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. But that included a, uh, five-year warranty, which was not included on the bid spec. That was submitted by Packet Logic.
So it's not apples to apples.
It's, no, so the, the, the actual, uh, bid from Packet Logic is, uh, ten thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and five cents.
So Packet Logic is ten thousand and then an additional two for the five-year.
Or an additional warranty on the computers, which, which we did not request.
Milliard still are.
And they're right local in Barrington, so.
Yes.
Make a motion to go with Pack Logic.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, did you inquire with Milliard what their, uh, warranty would be or is that in their paperwork?
I couldn't find any information on, uh, Milliard, other than that they were a business in Maryland, but there was no website, no, uh, I believe that probably some kind of a broker in computers, but I, I'm just guessing at that. But I looked to try to figure out who they were because I had never heard of them as well, so.
There's a level of comfort with the people that we know and we've worked with, so.
But is their bid still higher even when you pull out the warranty, Packet Logic?
Packet Logic bid would be eight hundred, um, seven hundred dollars higher, yes.
Seven hundred, we
Higher, yeah.
Can you accept that bid?
Question.
I'm just, you know.
Yes, we can.
Lowest responsive bid based on the fact that it's a local firm.
That's right, okay. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's kind of where I'm going because, yeah, I don't think we can just reject it because of pricing, but it's a local firm and
Yeah, there were many factors.
There we go.
Motion's on the floor. Mr. Kalenda.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Yeah.
Um, yeah, the motion was made, Packet Logic, I think.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. All right, moving forward. Number three.
Uh, number three is, uh, actually, if, if just for your information that, uh, we had to close the, uh, football field at the Kikemewick Middle School. Um, and that was because, uh, two weeks ago, when we had a rainstorm on a Saturday, um, the football team that uses that field continued to use that field, um, and caused quite a bit of damage. Um, uh, the public works director, the pox and rec director and the athletic director from the, uh, school system went to the field, uh, evaluated it and agreed that the field had to be closed. We have, um, went out to a, a local contractor, um, and he looked at it, assessed it and said that, uh, he gave us an evaluation of how much it would cost to repair. The football team, uh, agreed that they would cover the cost of, to repair that field, uh, which has taken place and the field, but the field is, is unusable for the rest of the season because of that.
The grass is destroyed.
Correct.
All right, thanks for the info.
Moving forward.
Um, numbers, number, uh, four is regarding the munis system. We had talked about that, uh, I believe last, last, uh, month. Uh, last Tuesday, we had a demonstration here from, um, Tyler Technologies, which runs that, which has that software system. Um, it's a very, um, very nice system. It's, uh, very user friendly, uh, very transparent. Um, there's the ability for residents to go into a portal and look at, uh, financial so, information, um, almost, uh, up to date or would be up to date when, when they go in to look at it. We have not gotten any quotes back or from, uh, Tyler Technology. They did give us, uh, a ballpark figure, but they have to come up with what, uh, we would, what, uh, aspect of their software that it runs. I'm sorry.
Is it this?
No, no.
No, 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 no. That's the website.
So it's, it's a financial software.
This is the financial software?
Oh, I'm sorry. Looking at, John.
Yes, yeah, the financial software, I'm sorry. Uh, this is the financial.
I thought it was, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, um, it's, uh, I talked to the, uh, finance director in Bristol yesterday. Um, he loves the system, very easy to use. Um, they have been on it since July. Um, the process took probably six to nine months beforehand before they were able to implement this program. Um, but so far, he really, uh, i- is, uh, doing a wonderful job. They really like it.
Does Mr. Bruzy think this is a good one?
Uh, I have not talked to him, but I will. I can reach out to, um, Mike England.
I can do that. I just wasn't sure if he was, uh, if you guys were communicating on this exact, uh, company.
And the
Because I know he, he talked.
Yes, he did. Yeah, he talked about, uh,
I just wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Our budget committee, uh, approved it or said it, it had features that would allow us to do more, uh, controlled invoicing and cap overspending.
There'll be, yes, there would be oversight, there'd be checks and balances when someone put in for a PO. And if the money's not there, the PO cannot go.
Okay.
Uh, and if, if, it would have to be o- overridden by somebody in authority, but rather than just having the PO go in and There are a lot of features in it that, um, you know, the other thing is there is a Rhode Island working group here. Um, so that the people who use this system, there are quite a few, uh, municipalities and school departments that use this system. And they get together, have a working group and if, um, if there is a change, if there's a change in law, uh, Tyler said that they would be responsible for, uh, changing that in our system. They would update our system, so they would, they're be connected to the state of Rhode Island, so.
When and what do you think the next step's gonna be?
Uh, the next step would be to find out what, uh, the cost is gonna be. The, I, and you know, the cost is probably somewhere over two hundred thousand to get this system, depending on which modules you get. Uh, from Bristol, I think they told me they just have the finance system right now and then you can build upon it with HR and, and other modules, but right now they just have the financial package.
So with a sharp pencil, we still may be able to use the R.
There may, yes, we would have to definitely look at that to see if there's, there may be some, uh, negotiation that we could do with Tyler. We may not have everything for the, uh, software in the, um, rescue plan money.
The next step would be to find out exactly how much money we have left.
Yes.
In that, in, in those accounts and then, uh, have the discussion.
Yes.
And if there are any grant opportunities to, to cover.
There's any, anything.
Any, any, anything. I mean, this is like, call our, call our legislators, call our federal delegation to see if there's any money there.
Agreed, yes. The other thing is we, if we could work a plan with them where it's, uh, uh, not everything upfront, where we pay a little at a time, that would
I mean, we might be close.
Yes, we might be close, yes.
Let's, let's find that out and then figure out a plan.
Current system we're using, we own that now. Is that kind of what it is?
We, we do own it, yes.
And I think we can give it away.
No, I, I, I agree. It's, it sounds like it's a behemoth and it's just not even functional for us, so. And this is the way, obviously the way to go, so.
Yes, I, I think it gives, um, the finance director some, uh, gray hairs, yes.
Moving on to number five.
Uh, number five is the, um, this is the update on the website. If, if you recall, um, we had showed, I had showed you some, um, different views on the layout of the website and I believe someone said that it looked like tombstones and, um, that was not a good idea. So, well, the woman that's, uh, working on our design came up with these two, um,
Yep, we skipped number.
Features look like, I'm, I'm sorry?
Number five is the pump station.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Sorry.
Yep.
You can finish your thought on this one and then go back to the pump station.
Yeah.
Um, so the, these are the two different designs that would, we would see on the
The website.
Website.
Can we create a, uh, link to that so we can see what it actually looks like that, you know, the, the photocopies of this? Is there any, you know, backend sort of?
Yes, I can, I can send you, um, I'll, I'll get a link that I can email to you and you can click on it and you'll be able to see, um, in person, yes.
Is it still within or is it still all just gob, gobbledygook?
So right now it's just, uh, their design, so it's just, uh, information or stuff that they have, so, um, but it's, it's the views. There'll be, I think there's three or four different views that you can see on that, uh, when I send it to you.
That'll be good.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, back to the pump station. Um, I spoke to, uh, Mr. De Pont and, um, he has asked me to have the public works director reach out, uh, give him his telephone number so they can communicate. And he's gonna have a crew, uh, reinstall those, um, that facade on that building.
Oh, right, right, okay. Number seven?
Uh, so number seven is update on the, uh, town planner and the harbor master open position. So, um, the town planner, we are currently advertising, um, and indeed, um, the American, uh, planners association, Rhode Island chapter, Massachusetts chapter. Um, I've reached out to some planners that I know to ask them to, uh, uh, put the word out. I've asked my staff, uh, that to, uh, as well, reach out to people I know and spread the word that this, that their position is open. Um, and, uh, other, uh, staff had put it on other their association's website. So we're, we're trying to get this as far and wide as we can, uh, as far as advertising the position.
For those who don't know, Herb has moved on.
Have we received any?
I'm s-
Have, have any applications come in? Have we gotten any hits?
There are, none have been dropped off as far as paper. There have been some in, indeed, um, I believe that some have been brought to indeed, but none have been brought in, uh, in hand.
And when is that gonna close?
Well, we have a closing date of November first.
Okay.
Uh, to go along with that, um, I am seeking permission from the council to, uh, reach out to get some assistance to fill that gap. Um, even though that Herb is left, there are still, uh, plans that are coming in and, um, we're gonna need some, uh, expertise and, and reviewing them. Uh, so I'm looking to try to, to get permission from the council to, to bring in a consultant.
Tonight?
I'm looking to get permission from tonight, yes.
Don't have that.
And I'm not there.
Yeah, we don't have that on our agenda.
You're just telling the council that you're going to go out and try and get someone.
Correct, yes.
You're just, you're just giving us the
I'm just letting, letting you know that.
All right.
I believe it was done, um,
So I don't think the agenda was worded to accommodate that request.
Uh, I believe it was also done in the past when, uh, there was a planner. Um, we had
Oh, yeah.
Someone come in and, uh, fill in that gap.
Yeah, number eight.
Our number eight is the fan at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, if you recall, several months ago, uh, there was, um, there's an issue with the fan in the basement. Uh, does not circulate fresh air. Um, we had set aside some American Rescue Plan money, thirteen thousand dollars for that. Uh, we had one quote that came in, in, uh, August, that which was fifteen thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars, which was rejected by the council.
Yeah, because this one, eleven grand.
At that time, yes, at that time. So we, uh, what's gonna happen is we reached out to, um, companies that, to get, or a- actually Eric has worked, reached out to some companies and they've come in and looked at it and they are going to not fix the fan that's there, put a brand new, different unit in there. Before they were trying to fix the original fan. Now this is gonna be a, a different unit. It's gonna be a completely new unit.
So are rejecting this bid?
So you already rejected this bid before. This was, um, in August, you rejected this bid because it was too much and I was asked to, uh, renegotiate. Yeah, renegotiate. And then the renegotiation is, uh, comes to thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
I don't have that. I have eleven thousand. I have one for ten thousand.
I'm sorry, eleven thousand. I have the wrong one.
Eleven thousand, four hundred and
Correct. That's the, that is the, uh, updated one.
Yep.
Okay, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Four hundred and three and fifty cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Eleven four it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Director. Good evening.
Hi, Mr. Vice President.
How you doing, Dave?
Members of the council?
No.
I have, I just have a few things to update you on. You may recall, a few months ago, I think we gave you a heads up that the governor was about to sign a increase in the employer contribution to the MERS, uh, system, the retirement system. Well, he did that and, uh, for a while we didn't have the number. We have it now. It went from nine point four eight percent up to ten and a quarter percent, about an eight percent increase. We think that that's gonna cost us about forty-five thousand dollars this year. Now, keep in mind that this, this increase came after everybody's budget was, was approved and finalized. So we got a hunt for that money. I'm doing that. Um, we'll keep you posted. Uh, in the revenue and expense side, you know, September is among our lowest revenue month for collecting taxes. The last three years has averaged like, uh, four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. This September was four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, seven percent below average. I think it was because you recall July, we took in like five point six million, which is way out of the, the norm. But anyway, we survived September. Um, we got through it with the bills paid and we still had a few bucks in the bank. Um, I thought it was gonna be more difficult. October, uh, should be a lot better. October averages three point eight million over the last three years. And that seems about a reasonable number. In fact, that's about the number that I, I estimated, uh, a few months ago when I did the, uh, the cash flow. We have no big debt payments or anything like that in October, November. Uh, the only, uh, unusual thing is that November's a three payroll month, but we knew that.
When's the next collection quarter?
November. Right now.
November one, yeah.
It's starting, yeah, November first.
November first.
People are starting to pay already.
Understood, just wanted.
Yep.
And, and Dave, just for clarity's sake, the increase was zero point eight five. It went from nine point four to ten point two five, so it's like a zero point eight five increase that we're responsible for.
Nine point four eight.
Yeah, you just, you're doing quick math because I think you said eight percent.
Eight percent.
And I was like, you know, it's not, it's point eight.
I said about.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, which just, so the people in the public, huh?
Okay.
Yeah.
As well as us. Although I knew it wasn't eight percent.
Um, the next thing is, uh, 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 Brian and I have received a report from the accountant that we engaged to help us, um, get the, uh, get everything reconciled and get the information ready for the, uh, for the audit. Um, some of the highlights, he, he has completed eleven of the sixteen accounts. He's reconciled them. He has identified and addressed some discrepancies that he found in our general fund. He's looked at our, uh, town grant awards and expenditures. And he's done a thorough review of our, our, uh, chart of accounts. You know, chart of accounts is like your garage. It needs to be swept every couple of years, you know, and get rid of the dead wood that's not being used. So the, the plan for the next month or two can, is continue the bank recs, get those done by the end of November. finalize a report on our capital assets, which we need for our, our, um, audit, which is not gonna be much because we didn't have much capital assets last year. Um, and work with our auditor. This is, this is really good. He, Dave has a long history of working with Mary Sahidi, who, with our auditor, who you heard from in June. Furthermore, the, uh, young accountant who managed our audit last year has gone over to his firm and she will be working with him on our, um, issues too. And she knows, she's very familiar with our, our, uh, books. So I got.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Tax Assessor.
Good evening, Chris. I always ask, how's Josh?
He's good.
All right.
Um, good evening. So, I have two things on the agenda tonight, um, requesting an abatement to the twenty twenty-three tax roll, so last year's tax roll, in the amount of six thousand ninety-six dollars and forty-six cents.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Aye.
All opposed?
Yes, I could second.
It's okay.
Yeah, and all opposed, sorry, yep, sorry. And number two?
Number two would be in addition to the current tax year, the twenty-four tax roll in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-two cents.
So, move.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
The ayes have it.
Thanks, Chris. And back to our town planner.
Not our town planner.
Nah, it's all right, I'm gonna instruct the fire, I mean, the police chief to, you know, handcuff him to the podium. Good evening, Herb.
Good evening. Uh, again, Herb Durfee, former town planner. Um, the, there are a couple of things on the agenda. This one, uh, is becoming somewhat perennial, I apologize for that, but, um, uh, you wanted, there are some additional information that we, uh, decided to continue the discussion on at the last month, um, given the new information that had come forward to me with regard to some Riedem action from the past. So, essentially, what's in your packet tonight is, uh, some additional timeline information in terms of documentation that, uh, that I was able to obtain from Fasson O'Neal, that's been involved engineering-wise with this project for a number of years. And then, as a result of the information, um, the solicitor asked, uh, that I be prepared to answer a couple of questions, uh, for the council and that's, uh, included the tail end, uh, from that standpoint. So, the, 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 what I'm trying to do still is to move forward with phase three of the restoration project, which is the final phase of Jamil's Park. Um, the three phases as a whole, as I understand, in stepping back from things, the three phases evolved from the requirement that you put a plan together for closing your landfill a number of years ago. As you know, two of those three phases were completed, the third phase is the remaining one that I've been up here repeatedly, uh, trying to move forward, but was not, I personally was not aware that it was part of the closure plan from that standpoint, that is related, um, directly to the past correspondence that you have before you tonight, at least the reference to it from that standpoint. Um, we, again, we do have, um, three grants that we've been awarded, uh, totaling two million dollars. Uh, the Infrastructure Bank is still willing to pay directly the contractor, Fasson O'Neal, with regard to the engineering aspect of things in the pre-construction to get us ready for bidding. In addition, Reeve has said in a recent email to me that they are willing to directly pay the constru-, excuse me, the construction contractor as well.
That was a sticking point, one of, one of the-
Hmm, the sticking point related to the reimbursement aspect of things and the, 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 uh, legal teams could not come to consensus on, on the ability to pay as it pertains to the reimbursement. However, the Infrastructure Bank is willing to do a bridge loan, um, to help with regard to the fronting of the other two grants that are involved, that affect in the long run, does not, would not require the town to, it would help with the reimbursement as- aspect of things, so you would not have to front money based on the, the courtesy of what they're offering. What is part of that, the hook to that, is of course, you'll have some interest payment and some closing costs with regard to that. In order to accommodate that, I think the bidding docs could say that construction does not start until July one of twenty twenty-five, no, earlier than July one of twenty twenty-five, the construction aspect of things, such that there would be a budget season coming up that you could, that we could get some num-, some preliminary numbers from the Infrastructure Bank as to what would be such closing costs and potential interest, depending on the length of the term of the, it would essentially be a short-term loan.
You don't have any idea now?
I, I, I have not had the opportunity to, to chat with them from that standpoint, but that we could bu- budget, somebody would budget that for, um-
But we have to have the money to budget. Yeah, just-
I, I understand.
We're right back to that same-
Correct.
How do we do this?
Right, and I think a piece of it, if I can, uh, it, now that I'm no longer gainfully employed by Warren, my suggestion might be that you have built into the process, um, in your ta- tax rate, I'm putting the school bond aside for a second, but you've built into your process, the million, the tax rate accommodates the million dollars for your injury settlement payment. Now that you're involved with this, with the settlement from the state, the settlement bond, you'll still be, you're still required to pay that, but you're gonna be doing it over time. So, your tax rate, while you want it to come down on the municipal side from that standpoint, you could bring it down such to the point that you're still accommodating for the interest payment as well as the, uh, the, um, closing costs. So, you, you current, your current tax rate currently is built to accommodate. Not that you wanna do that, I'm, I'm not saying that's the pleasant way of talking about it.
Way of saying it, but we have to have the money to fund that cost.
So, the other side of the story is, if we're gonna continue to argue about this, what, no, no, I'm just, I'm being, I'm being somewhat crass and I'm not intending to, is that if we don't move forward with this project, it's likely that Riedem will step forward and cite you. And when they cite you, the citation will be dollars and it will be, you have to do phase three to close out the landfill. So, in my opinion, it is in the best interest of the community to work with the Infrastructure Bank to get your financial structure in place with regard to this. You've got two million dollars overall, i- i- in general, to do that. Obviously, the bidding process will finalize what the estimated cost is from that standpoint. But if you effectively unilaterally don't move forward with this project with the grant sources in front of you and you allow this to happen in terms of, you were, you were given a notice of non-compliance in the past. Um, so therefore, I think that you're on the hook, whether Riedem is sitting today in the front row of the arena or ten rows back, in terms of the time that they might, um, come forward with some additional stuff. Or if you can work something out by talking to Riedem to delay something, that's for the community to decide later on. But right now, I think that it's in the best interest to move forward with a project, uh, with our, with the pre-construction, get the bids in, uh, work with the Infrastructure Bank to, uh, do the pre, uh, pay the directly for the particular cost to the contractors and then work with a, with a short-term bridge loan in order to move forward with this. Um, because I, I, I just think the overall liability to the community is gonna be greater if you don't do this.
Right, so just pause for a second. So, all very valid points, all right on point, I always go to my solicitor. So, there's always two things. I, I rarely could care less of whether or not Riedem cites us or not. I just wanna know if it's gonna cost us money and if we would win or lose if we had to put on a fight.
Well, uh-
And what's the timeline?
Ba- based on the memory you have before you right now and the comments that were made at the September meeting and this meeting, you're gonna lose.
Okay.
So, to me, you have to go forward with it now, you're gonna have to figure out how to front the money that's gonna be reimbursed later, you really have no choice.
And I tried to do a little homework assignment on whether or not we could walk this back from what happened in September. There's no possible avenue of walking back where we are right now with Riedem. Okay, so we're faced with how to get the funds to fund this two million dollar project.
That'll be reimbursed.
But there's a window of them reimbursing, right, was it like a sixty-day window that the money would become back in?
In general, the, uh, SNAP project, uh, they give you a window of basically thirty days. Typically, it's earlier than that, but they generally say that, you know, they need thirty days. With regard to, um, the Narragansett Bay Watershed Fund, um, again, that's done through Riedem, so that's, can be a thirty, just up to sixty-day timeframe.
Because the biggest concern I have is that we are able to make our obligations for, for MERS or, you know, whatever work is coming in, in charge to the trust, that we need to make so it doesn't give us a shortfall and we don't have those money, because we're dealing with this.
Well, I think, Mr. Kalenda, today isn't gonna be the day that we decide this, is that correct?
No, I think it is today.
With the funding.
Yeah, we need to-
She said, she said it was gonna be July of twenty-five.
The, when I, I'm talking about the construction, you could proceed with the, with the pre-construction aspect of things, uh, enabling Fasson O'Neal to move forward, actually, you have already granted that with a proviso that the solicitor, um, uh, is in, is in sync with-
Where I'm coming from is because we don't have the answers to those financial questions about the cost of the interest of the loan.
Yeah, I'm not, not, that's one of the options.
See how we can move forward tonight without knowing what that action's gonna cost us, even if it's fifty bucks.
That, that's one of the options that you have. I think what's gonna happen is, if we go forward and approve the R I I B, they're gonna make the direct payments for the pre-construction, that's gonna give you some time. But once you do that, you gotta go forward with the whole project.
Right.
And all the grants, that's why you need an approval tonight.
So, isn't there a way?
Essentially, what you're doing is, is you're deferring, uh, the action as to how you're going to, um, make the, the payments that will be reimbursed and figure that out in your, in your subsequent budgets, the FY twenty-six budget and going forward.
But can't we get that information and pass, and do this next month?
I, I just, like, what I'm concerned about is, is the status of the, of the grant. I don't know if there's some kind of a deadline for this. And if you don't say yes now, we're gonna take the grants, if they go by the wayside, then you get whacked by D E M.
Your recommendation is to appro- approve this and find out what the cost is gonna be?
I, I don't, I don't think you have any-
Legally?
The, the risk is too great.
You don't have any-
We don't have a choice.
You don't have any room to maneuver.
Yeah.
Who will be pursuing this?
I would have to leave it in the hands of the town manager at this particular juncture.
Normally, normally-
Normally, it would be me, correct?
Well, Mr. Wheeler's gonna have to become more involved, that's a, that's-
I'm just asking you because it's, you know, it's a lot to juggle here, so.
Well, I think it's gonna be a team effort for many department heads.
Till we have a planner.
It's a way in, yeah.
So, I guess, why are you in this force?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, motion to what? What, what's the request?
Authorize.
Authorize the expenditure or authorize the project? I, I, I shouldn't word this.
Auth- uh, authorize moving forward with Jamil's Park Restoration Pro- Project Phase Three.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Accepting the grants thereby.
And accepting the grants thereby.
Second.
We have a duly second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Number two?
Uh, first of all, thank you on that one, I know that's difficult. Um, secondly, um, we've received some, um, the, the, uh, town received, there is, there is a grant that we received in the past for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Wood Street Pump Station upgrade, wastewater-related. Um, we have, as, as you're aware, we did put an application in for some economic development, uh, um, E D A, Economic Development Administration, funding, um, that so far seems like we're gonna be getting, uh, of, in the neighborhood of three point one million dollars. Uh, that, uh, that we've been going back and forth in terms of whether there's a match or not from that standpoint. There, it, it's apparent, based on their review of the town's financials, there's room to, uh, for the town to afford a match. Um, from my continuing discussion with the E D A, I believe I was successful in reducing that match from twenty percent down to seven percent, the equivalent of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that you have from Riedem. In order to, um, do that, uh, what we, what we've worked with Riedem is shifting it from the Wood Street Pump Station to the wastewater treatment plant, um, uh, with that. And the reason why we believe, uh, that we can do the shift, if, you know, I don't wanna ignore the Wood Street Pump Station because that deserves to be upgraded, but it's so far more expensive than the grant that we received from Riedem, that we're not in a position to move forward with that upgrade at that point. So, rather than, so while we were talking about, um, E D A with the electrical resiliency upgrades, the wastewater treatment plant, um, uh, the, the idea came to shift it from, uh, that part of Riedem over to this, this particular grant and that would serve as that particular match. Are you in the same boat that you are with regard to the previous discussion, that both grants are based on a reimbursement basis? Yes. The difference in terms of, at least with E D A, is that they use a, a program, I think it's called ASAP. And essentially, you can actually submit requests for reimbursement that you get within two to three days after making the request. You can do it technically without, you can, without having had a check being canceled yet. So, you can put the request in, the check is cut, you'll get the reimbursement for it, so it's still reimbursement. There's, uh, and I know that the solicitor will say, well, there's never no guarantee that you're gonna get it within three days, so I'll, I'll stay in his camp. But the difference in time will be much shorter, um, but that is the situation that you're at. And we don't have the formal notice that we got the E D A thing yet. We keep hearing behind the scenes that we have, but we're also hearing that there's, that there's some additional just processes that we have to go through. Nevertheless, um, what, uh, what I'm looking to, to do is to, for you to authorize signing the grant before you, um, that would be the transfer from, uh, the Wood Street Pump Station to the, uh, electrical resiliency upgrade at the wastewater, wastewater treatment plant, um, and could be signed by the town manager so that we can at least get that going in the mix in anticipation of the E D A, um, grant award.
So, we can get three point one million for two hundred and fifty thousand?
Yes, sir. And the two hundred and fifty is a grant unto itself and the, and the match required of the two hundred and fifty, the E D A leverages that. So, that, so that, so the net cost, like I've said before with the Jamil's Park project, is the net cost would be zero to the community, but again, reimbursement basis, so you're a little bit still in that kind of, um, catch twenty-two, right?
Immediate reimbursement.
So, the, the reimbursement is clearly a lot better, uh, in terms of the previous, uh, discussion that we just had from that standpoint, um, um, and, um, but it's still reimbursement.
It sounds a little do- more doable.
In, in my opinion, yes.
May, may I ask a question?
Of course.
So, are we gonna amend the agreement that, that we have with, is this a fifty-fifty match?
The, uh, I'm sorry, yes, this is fifty-fifty, but the, again, the E D A portion totally, uh, matched it, right? Because the original grant was, uh, the original project was five hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty, I'm used to it.
Subsequent document for that.
The, um, this, the contract that's before you is, is the agreement that would be signed, uh, that would put the, the, uh, um, the grant specifically to the resiliency project, if that's your-
Okay, so that's fifty-fifty.
Yep.
Two fifty from D E N, two fifty from the town, the D E N two fifty is on, excuse me, reimbursement basis.
The, uh, sorry, it's a, it's the fifty percent of, uh, related to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar from, uh, Riedem, the, the fifty percent, the E D A serves as the match for that, so that, yep.
Great. You're comfortable with that?
Well, I was on the, uh, actually went on, on the phone with these, uh, E D A people, uh, and they were very persuasive and aggressive. Uh, the only other thing you need to know is it's a three-year project, that's the term. And the other thing is, is that, uh, we're gonna have to change Grant East Authorized Representative because Herb has taken a new position, uh, that should be shifted over to the town manager from time being.
So, motion to shift, uh, uh, language to the responsibility of the town manager as the signer, that we are saying?
Isn't the, he on, what page?
I'm on page three, I'm Carrie.
Oh, okay, I was down on six.
Representative?
Yep.
Is Herb.
Right, so-
I think we need-
My motion would be to the town manager to be authorized as the representative signing.
Correct, yes.
It's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And then my next motion would be, based on the information Herb's, uh, supplied, is there any language that would need to be changed? The accuracy of these, uh, paybacks and all, is that all?
My, my recommendation would be based on what the solicitor is talking about, is that now that you've authorized the town manager to sign, that he would be, uh, uh, effectively, he can talk to Sean McCormick at Riedem that's responsible for this to get the particular language-
So, no further action tonight?
Subject to receipt of the E D A documents and then be giving no further action.
So, no further action?
Subject to receipt of the E D A documentation.
The motion is to continue subject to the E D A documents?
Approved, subject to-
Approved, subject to.
Of the E D A documents, that's it.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you again, uh, lastly, I'm sorry, uh, lastly, tonight, um, Thank you again. Uh, lastly, I'm sorry, uh, lastly tonight, um. We, uh, as you may recall, we received an earmark for some addition, for some work dealing with the primary sludge. Uh, uh, tanks at the wastewater treatment facility. Um, that is a um, project that is um. Uh, an eighty-twenty um, project. Um. At. Is this the one? Hold on, just making sure I'm going through the right one. Dealing with two towns right now, it's hard. Uh, so write this, and it's being funneled through EPA. Um, and um, Brian, you'll have to, Mr. Manager, you'll have to remind me in terms of the match amount, did we have? Did we have ARPA assigned to this yet or did we, we don't have the local match yet, correct? So this is a, this is an earmark that we've received that is pat, is passing through EPA. Not E D A, but EPA, um, that is an eighty-twenty um, cost. It does, it's specific to the primary settling tank upgrades. Uh, where you're actually having some emergency work done with the rail replacements, if you remember that. So we're not in place yet for um. Um, for the ability to, to move forward with the project because we don't have the match identified from that standpoint. However, um, as in moving forward from that standpoint, there is. Uh, we do have to go out to bid with regard to um, uh, teams that we have working with that. So even though we have an on-call engineer through contract that went through a bidding process. Um, EPA via the earmark program does require that, that even you, the use of him. We still have to do a, a, a bidding process. So what, what you have before you is a request for qualifications. That simply is specific to identifying the firm that uh we would use in, in proceeding forward. With uh any design and engineering-related work that would take us to the point where if you, if we did go out to bid. With regard to the project overall. Um, so it's, it's, to a degree, it's a little bit cart before the horse. But you don't, I, if there's any work to be done on that particular project. I don't have the luxury of relying on our current engineer, given the, the procurement process that we have to go through at the federal level. So the idea is to at least go out on a request for qualifications. To see who's out there that we could select from that standpoint. What, if that selection is made, then you've got an engineer in place to move forward with that.
I think I got it. I think I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so uh, to do something. Well, so.
So we do need a motion on this?
Yeah.
Tony, we need a motion, yes.
Yes, and also you might wanna change that. Uh, because the K.
Well, I noticed this, fingerprints are all over this.
Yeah.
So we can adjust this and put our present town manager?
Right, yeah.
Okay, so with that notes, is there a motion, please?
Um, motion to authorize a bidding growth for National Wastewater Engineering Services.
Second.
With the adjustments that.
The adjusted language recommended by the solicitor.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it. Thank you, Herb.
Thank you, Herb. See her.
Police chief, handcuff him to the podium, please.
Just thank you for allowing me the opportunity to work for the community.
No, thank you.
It's uh, it, I, I definitely am missing Warren already, although I haven't fully left because I'm trying to help Brian out and tying up loose ends.
We have to drive through it every day.
I did enjoy it and I, and the community especially has been accommodating to me and that really was the reward.
Thank you. I almost popped into your office this morning, this afternoon too. I was like, I'll see him tonight.
If I saw you come, I would have run.
I know my way around that building too. Thank you. Recreation director, good evening.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
And you speak just fine in public.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so uh, as you know, we did not receive any bids for the fence, for the community garden. So we went out to the M P R list. We didn't have, we had uh one other person uh come out for that list. You have that other bid, it was like forty-five thousand dollars. Um, so we are going with Fence Pro, who did the work at the dog park and Baker Street. For fifteen thousand five hundred.
And this is the, coming out of the grant.
This is all paid for through the grant.
Yikes, and uh, so we've already worked with this company.
I have.
Uh, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Eyes have it. Thank you, Tara. And your hair looks nice, nicely.
This is the community garden.
Hi, Chief.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
What happened earlier? Everything all right?
Small fire down the road, everything's okay, yep.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'm coming to look for approval to purchase, uh, I don't know how much the information you got, uh, three. Lucas uh version three point one CPR chest compression systems. Uh, we currently have three of them, one on each ambulance and one has broken, unfortunately not while in use. And no longer serviceable, all three are the same type and fall in that same age group of not being serviceable. So the quote you have before you is to replace all three. There is a price for getting three at once, uh, and a very good trade-in value of our three old ones. That trade-in value could go down as time goes by. At every price increase, a price update of the new unit. The trade-in value likely would go down and the next price increases, well, price adjustment is expected on November first.
Maybe it'd be appropriate if you explained to the members of the public what a Lucas system is.
Yep, Lucas is a, uh, it's a, it's a device that does the chest compressions during CPR. Instead of having a person uh doing the compressions manually. Uh, it's much more, the statistics show the rate of success is much greater. Uh, because of the uniformity of the chest compressions by this machine. It also keeps one more person out of the way and allows uh other intervention to go on on the side of a patient by the other E M Ts.
This is a non-budgeted item.
Correct, it's a very critical piece. Um, our protocols require we stay on the scene for some incident and students to be off for thirty minutes.
Understood.
Before we even transfer.
We have any idea where we have this money?
Yep, we're uh speaking to manager Sullivan, uh, we're hoping up a funds and he has a possibility.
If, if you.
I probably shrink it, it's not even a file.
Yeah, if, if, if you recall, when we did the um, allocation of funds for the wastewater treatment plant. It was six hundred and twenty-four, twenty-five thousand and I, I believe you, you believe that it was less, um.
Right.
And.
Got the heating system out of that.
Yeah, heating system out of that. So there is some money left that we, we, I mean, I would have. I think this is a critical piece of it.
We're gonna have to deal with this now and then the final tally is gonna be whether we can get the uh.
Right, this is, this is a much.
So it's coming out of the iron money.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Nothing else out of the iron money.
No, that's it. No, thank you, thank you. Thank you. And finally, uh, town clerk, discussion in action to begin the November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four town council meeting. At six P M. Any objections? I know.
Why are we doing it early? Right, 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 right.
Sure.
And that would be the November twelfth, yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Motion to approve.
So moved, second, here we go. Good night, good night.
The whole thing paperless.
Yes, you did. Congrats. I saw you.